On to the Thursday, January 20th, 2022, meeting in the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And in accordance with AB 361, Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually until further notice. With that, I will call the meeting to order and ask you to join me in a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Laura, could we have a roll call, please?
Alan Bonjio.
Here.
Noah Levy.
Here.
Brian Mitchell. Mike Newman.
President.
Melanie McAver.
Here.
Peggy O'Neill.
Here.
Thomas Mulder.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Looks like we have a quorum. Hopefully Brian will join us later. Oh, Brian, I just saw him. Shows he's connecting, so I think he will be with us. All right. So Director, do we have any agenda modifications tonight?
Thank you, Chair Bob. Just one thing I would call your attention to. The staff has recommended that you not conduct the workshop on the wireless telecomm ordinance. We are scheduling that for a public hearing on February 3rd, 2022. So you could make a motion just to either continue that off calendar, being advertised as a public hearing, or come through on February 3rd. Also, would like to note that there are quite a number of supplementals tonight. I apologize for that. There's a rather large stack for Humboldt Empire, the special permit, and there are also several supplementals for loving Humboldt.
Thank you, Director. So why don't we just get that little bit of business out of the way? And could I get a motion to move the proposed communications facilities ordinance to the February 3rd meeting?
So moved. So seconded.
Okay, so Noah's the first and Brian's the second. And
And that, that is just as a public, not the workshop, but a public hearing.
That is correct.
Correct, yes. All right.
Change.
Laura, roll call, please.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Harry's unanimous. Thank you, Laura. All right. So that brings us to public comment. And this is the time when anybody can speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. Let me get over to attendees. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? 7108, go ahead.
Go ahead, 7108.
Good evening. This is Bonnie Blackberry. And I was just going to read a letter to the editor that was in the Madden River Union on January 12th concerning this idea of moving the goalposts. And he, his letter is about farmers urging the planning commission not to quote, move the goalposts. Doesn't matter where it comes from, attempts to gain an unfair advantage in a game literally by shoving the goalposts. Moving goalposts is unfair because the rules of the game are well established, clearly defined, and in most sports has been in place for many decades, if not centuries. This is not the case in legal cannabis cultivation. People of goodwill on the whole are trying to balance multiple social, ecological, and economic values to create what's in effect a new game. It takes years for the unintended consequences of new rules to become apparent. Cumulative impacts take time to well accumulate. I very much sympathize with farmers who feel frustrated by the lack of final definitive rules. But the fact is, we're just not there yet. It's an ongoing messy process deciding where the goalposts ought finally to go to settle on the current flat permitting process, simply because that's where we started with would be a serious mistake. And this is by Jim Moore in Bayside. And it reflects my perceptions regarding the idea of changing. We've had all the people on the court steps recently saying how much has changed since 2016. And economically, yes, and environmentally as well, but that doesn't count as much. Also, I'm just curious how the planning commissioners, these maps that were presented, is this what you're looking for? And can you find useful information that'll help you make informed decisions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bonnie. Next caller is Stephen Lou. Go ahead. Go ahead. They're unmuted, but are you there, Stephen? Well, give him another second here, but anybody else that wishes to speak on public comment?
Mr. Chairman, is appropriate for commissioners to say something in this, at this time?
Absolutely, as long as it's not agendized for tonight.
It is not agendized. I noticed that in a recent or upcoming Board of Supervisors meeting, there is an appeal of a matter that the Planning Commission debated and considered and passed unanimously. That decision was appealed, and our staff is recommending that the Planning Commission decision be overturned and go with the applicant or the appellant. And I guess I would just ask if there are situations where we're taking action where the staff doesn't believe that it's supportable or defensible that that information be brought to us so that we can consider that? Or if new information comes to light afterwards, that that information be gone over with us? Because, you know, the way I understand that it works, that we're the body that advises the Board of Supervisors, and when we unanimously come to a decision to have staff going the complete other way, feels like perhaps, you know, our time isn't being used valuably, or there's a fly in the ointment somewhere, so. Normally, staff seems to back what we say, but in this particular instance, I believe it had to do with water storage. If we could get some comments on that, either at a later meeting or at the end of this meeting, it would help me feel better about staff's position on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Would you like to comment, Director?
Happy to comment on it, but perhaps that would be best saved for the end of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. All right, Stephen Lou, I see your hand back up, so go ahead if you're ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I think I fixed those audio issues. I represent one of the applicants for tonight's hearing, and I'm just hoping that we can maintain the previous sort of flow of meetings where continued projects are heard first. I think at the last hearing, the newer projects were heard. And this particular project has been on the agenda and continued since the November Planning Commission hearing. And so it's been five or six hearings, and it's quite a financial burden to have an agent come and represent, but I understand the process and this is just a respectful, respectful request. If we can address some of these projects that have been lingering for quite a while here.
Just out of curiosity, which one is it?
Green Management Humboldt.
Okay.
Sure, it's really high on the agenda.
Okay, we'll probably get to it. I don't, I just don't think we're going to get to the last one that we already pulled, and the one right before that, I guess, would be the true last one. I'm not sure we're going to get that far, but I think we'll get to that one. All right, thank you. Next caller, Mike Cordova. Go ahead, Mike. Are you there, Mike? Mike shows you're open, but last chance. You're going. Speak. Okay. Well, I don't know what the problem is. I could see your mic showing that it was working, but now nothing, so. All right. Anybody else who wants to speak on public comment? See you none. I will close it.
Hello?
Oh. Are you there? I'll, I'll give him a chance to come back if he are you there, Mike? Unmute yours.
Yes, I am here.
All right. There you go. I'll reopen public comments.
Okay. Yeah, I was just coming on the Mad River Floodplain Habitat Restoration and Public Access Conditional Use Permit Extension. I neighbor that, that proposed project. I just wanted to give my support for that, that being extended as timely as possible.
Right. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
All right. See you. No more public com. Hands up. I am going to close the public comment now. And I will bring it back to the commission, and we will move on to the consent agenda. And it looks like we have three items. We have review and approval of the December 2nd, 2021 Action Summary, the approval of the December 16th, 2021 Action Summary, and review and approval of the January 6th Action Summary. So is there any discussion on any of this? This is on consent. Go, we get back to, no, go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, hi. Excuse me. I'm raising my hand to comment not on these consent items, but on the consent calendar in general. I'm fine with these consent items, by the way. They look, reminded me, I looked them over. But what I wanted to say is, I understand well, as we all do, why at a certain point last year, we stopped using the consent calendar to put projects on the, on that part of the agenda. But I wanted to suggest that maybe given how chronically backed up our agendas have become with, you know, like, like Stephen Lou commented, you know, items that are deferred for sometimes four or five different meetings continued. I mean, maybe we could try again to have the staff, at least my opinion would be, I would be in support of the staff, putting some of the most least controversial seeming items on the consent calendar again and see how that goes.
All right. I agree with that. I think it's worth trying. We just found that so many of them were being polled, or all of them were being polled. That's why we, we switched that policy. But I think it'd be a good idea to maybe try it again. Do you have any thoughts on that, Director?
It is painful to see some of these more simple items take an hour or so to discuss. And be happy to put things back on the consent agenda and see how it goes.
All right. So great. So I'm going to open this up for public comment as well. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on the three items, the three summaries that are on the consent calendar? All right. See you none. Bring it back to the commission. Would somebody like
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move consent items one, E1, 2, and 3.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? None. Laura, a roll call vote, please.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Mike Newman.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Right. Thank you, Laura. Looks like Carrie unanimous, so that'll move us on to item F, which we didn't have anything polled, and that'll take us to item G, which is continued public hearings. And the first one is Asia Best Coastal Development Permit and Conditional Use Permit. And I'll take a staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm going to have to recuse myself on this one, as they are a client of mine in several lines on insurance. So I will sign off if you will text me or somebody texts me.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead with the staff report, please.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonjio. Do you see that okay?
Yes.
All right. The project is Asia's Best Applied for Coastal Development Permit and the Conditional Use Permit. The application for CUP and the CDP is to allow for a, an existing retail food market in a 600 square foot classroom of a former school. Also, in that wing of the school is the Humboldt Del Nord County Medical Society. The project is located in the Myrtle Incorporated, Myrtle Town area of the county within the Humboldt Bay Community Plan area at the southeast corner of Edgewood Road and Myrtle Avenue. The use is on the campus of Sacred Heart Church, and the, the school there is no longer in use. So the, the market would be at the east end in the square, 600 square foot classroom. At the west end is the, the office of the medical facility. The project site is designated by the County General Plan as residential low density and is in Humboldt Bay Area Plan. Zoning is residential, single family, 5,000 square foot minimum. Use is allowed in this zone with a conditional use permit. And the use is allowed in Humboldt Bay Area Plan with a conditional use permit. And the use is consistent with the general plan, the local coastal plan, and the zoning ordinance. Referral responses were received from County Public Works, Land Division, the Coastal Commission, and County Environmental Health, and all recommended approval with no conditions. Staff recommends the commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to sections 15301 and 15303 of the secret guidelines, that the commission make the required findings for approval of the CUP and the CDP based on the evidence in staff report and adopt the resolution approving the project subject to the recommended conditions. Concludes staff report.
Does any of the commissioners like to ask questions of staff at this point? All right. See you none. Thank you, Dez. I will open this up for public comment then. Anybody who wishes to speak on this item? See you none. I will close the public comment, bring it back to the commission. Is there any thoughts on this one?
This one seems like a one that's ready to be approved and doesn't seem to have a lot of controversy around it, and that'd be willing to make a motion once we hear from our fellow commissioners.
Anybody else? I have a thought on this one, but anybody else want to speak first? Okay. I have a concern, not so much about this project, because I think it's zoned right. I think it's a good use of the space. I have a problem that this business has been operating for, I, I don't know how long, but probably close to a year, and now it's coming before the commission to get permission to go in there. It just seems like that shouldn't be allowed. I don't know why this one, it's been bugging me. I did get a few calls from neighbors that were concerned about it, so that really got me looking at it. I don't really have any problem, like I say, with, with it. It just seems like it, there's the cart before the horse kind of thing, so that's my only thought on it. So any other thoughts or anybody like to make a motion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 1, 5301 and 15303 of the state secret guidelines, make all the required findings for approval of the Conditional Use Permit and Coastal Development Permit based on evidence in the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the Asia Best Market Project subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Brian. Can we have a second?
I'll second it.
Peggy. All right. Any further discussion? See you none. Laura, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bonjio.
Yes.
Thomas Mulder.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Melanie McAver.
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous and is approved. That brings us to the second item, the MidGad LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Salmon Creek area. And we'll take a staff report on this one.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
We'll go full screen. Do you see the full screen? Are you looking at the double screen?
Double screen.
Okay. Let's see, how do I search these? Okay.
Okay, there we go.
All right. So tonight, I'm going to present to you MidGad LLC. My name's Abby Strickland, and this application number is 10651. The project is located in the Salmon Creek area. You can see it there in the blue parcel there. It's owned forestry recreation and has a land use designation of residential agriculture. The applicant seeking a conditional use permit for an 18,800 square feet of existing outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. They will also have a 1,000 square foot propagation greenhouse. All processing will be occurring onsite or occurs onsite. And annual water usage for the project is 227,000 gallons, and water storage totals 210,000 gallons. Energy is provided entirely by two solar arrays, and they do have a propane generator for backup purposes. The water source is entirely rainwater catchment. Historically, water's been sourced from two rainwater catchment ponds. There was some discrepancies to whether one of their in-water catchment ponds was hydrologically connected. So the applicant's actively working with an engineer to determine whether or not it's actually hydrologically connected. If it's determined to be, then they will be expanding the existing rainwater catchment pond to 220,000 gallons, and they'll also be obtaining additional water storage to meet their annual water demand. Staff recommend that you find the project consistent with the M and D adopted for the CMMLO pursuant to section 15164 of state secret guidelines, and make all of the required findings for approval of the MidGad LLC Conditional Use Permit subject to the recommended conditions. And the applicant and agent are here if you have questions.
All right. Thank you, Abby. Does anybody have any questions for Abby or the applicant?
I was just wondering what qualifies as an emergency for use of the propane generator? Like, is a cloudy day count, or is it only if a solar gener- generator is not functioning, and we need to get a repair person up there, or what qualifies as
So I can likely answer that question. First of all, state that the the solar arrays are really only powering the light that's in the propagation greenhouse, which are small string lights. And then will the, most energy is going to be required during the drying process, part of their processing. So I believe that if the backup generator were required to be reused, it would be for a very short period of time. But maybe Director Ford can give us the definition of emergency.
No, I think Abby Strickland answered that perfectly well. The, it would be in a situation where, for whatever reason, the solar generating capacity was compromised, and power was immediately needed.
Thomas, you have your hand up, then Peggy.
I think Peggy was before me, Chair.
Okay, Peggy, go ahead.
I just wonder if there's a timeline for the engineer to make a determination on the possible hydro-connected pond? Is, because you said they're working on that. Do you give them a timeline, or does it go on indefinitely?
So the agent has, is actively working with them now, and a condition that I wrote actually states that if they haven't made that determination prior, prior to the beginning of this cultivation season, their operations plan, I believe, states their season starts on April 1st, then they're going to have to be required to reduce their cultivation size to what can be supported by the water that's actively stored on site.
Thomas, go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that the generator, it states in this agenda, it's supplemental, not backup or emergency. And I think it's good use. not backup or emergency, and I think it's good use, and I support it, but I just wanted to point out that it did state that.
All right. Any other questions before I open this up for public? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Abby, and I will open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this project? 7108, go ahead.
Hi, I just had one question. It says existing outdoor cannabis, and then I think she said light depth. Is it light depth or outdoor? Thank you.
Go ahead, Abby, you want to answer that?
Yeah, sure thing. So, light deprivation is, by our standards, considered outdoor cultivation. I believe if you looked at the state definitions, then it would be considered mixed light, maybe. Yeah, yeah, I have that correct. So, it's technically outdoor, there is light depth, so they can obtain to harvest, but there's no lighting in the greenhouses.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the panel of the commission. So, any other? Go ahead, Thomas.
If there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I just...
Go ahead. Doesn't appear anybody else has got their hand up, so.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to take the following actions. Find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the commercial medical land use ordinance, CMM, or CCM L U O pursuant to Section 15164 of the State Sequel Guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and approve the MidGad LLC project subject to the recommended conditions of approval, including that amended recommended condition that was put up on the screen by staff.
Thank you, Thomas. Is there a second?
I'll second, and I just wanted to comment that I appreciate having the general conditions, ongoing requirements, and parentheses on all of these different topics that staff has in the executive summary. I really appreciate that. It makes it easy to go back and forth. It's what I'd like to see as much as possible.
I'll just chime in to second what Commissioner Newman just said. I strongly support that, including those conditions in the language of the executive summary, but it's not consistently done in all the staff reports, so I'd like to see them done more that way. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Mike Newman. All right. Laura?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, since, since the, the staff report and the executive summary has slightly different language, we don't know exactly how much of the electricity or power will be supplied by the generators, and I would like to add a condition that they do a power needs assessment, and to the extent to which the, the generator supplied power exceeds 80%, that they come up with a plan by the end of 2025 to fill that gap with renewable sources to be consistent with the other projects that we've done similarly.
The director would like to comment.
I want to make clear, Ms. Strickland, correct me if I'm wrong, but the power source is solar. The generator is not proposed as a power source. It's proposed when the solar is unavailable in emergency circumstances. So, basically, you would be asking them to do an analysis to show that the power will come from the solar arrays.
Well, I guess what I heard, and I may be, I may have misheard, but I heard the representatives say that for the drying portion, the generators would need to be utilized, and I don't, I don't know how much of the total power for this type of operation goes into the drying. I, it should be a simple analysis, and if it's between 1 and 20%, then they don't have to do anything else.
Sorry to clarify what Ms. Strickland said, is that the only time power is needed is when the ancillary uses are being utilized. There is no power for the cultivation. And so, in an emergency circumstance, power would only be needed for the drying, but that's only when the solar arrays are not available due to an emergency outage.
Okay, thank you for clarifying my misunderstanding of what she said. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Director.
Thomas, did you put your hand back up, or was that?
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't be in support of amending my motion, and because I'm going to state the same finding that we used to approve the McKay Track by Public Resource Code, Section 21002, Part C, where it's economic and socially infeasible, and that's why I would not support amending that motion.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion, or are we okay to have a vote on that? Seeing no hands, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Melanie McAver? Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Motion carries unanimous. Project is approved. So, that brings us to item number three. Green Management Group of Humboldt LLC Conditional Use Permit in the Garberville area. Take a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you see my screen?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Byron Turner, and I'm presenting the Green Management Group LLC project. This was originally heard, I believe, on December 2nd, where the Planning Commission voted to continue the project with additional information regarding power and water. The proposed project is to authorize an existing 17,740, excuse me, square foot of mixed light cannabis cultivation. There will be 1,740 square feet of ancillary propagation. It should be 740, I'm sorry, I misspoke. And drying occurs in an existing metal building. This slide shows the project location and access from its intersection with Benbow Drive. You should have a supplemental that contains a revised resolution, condition, road evaluation, and additional correspondence. First, the revisions include a condition to cease all generator use by the end of 2025. This is to address the concerns of some of the commission at the last hearing, and is suggested as a condition. The applicant has indicated that they are not in agreement with this condition of approval. However, it's our understanding that the applicant is willing to switch to solar power with batteries for string lights, direct drive solar fans, and automated, in an automated tarping system. The applicant is requesting the generator use be allowed to power the metal building where drying and partial propagation takes place. Additionally, planning staff received a comment from Public Works clarifying that the access is not accessed by a five-mile driveway, which was a concern at the last meeting, but a private road identified as Howard Ranch Road. The revised conditions correct this oversight, but does not change the findings or recommendations. Finally, at the last hearing, there were questions regarding points of diversion. To clarify, there are three sources of water, two points of diversion, and a 150,000 gallon offstream pond. One pond is for domestic purposes, one, I'm sorry, one point of diversion is for domestic purposes, the other is for irrigation. This point of diversion is seasonal, and water is diverted into tanks during the winter This, the pond stores 150,000 gallons of water, which would be filled in a normal rain year. This 150,000 gallons would represent 67% of the annual water demand. The applicant is also willing to install additional rain gutters to capture rainfall on the middle building to supplement water. The Planning Department recommendation remains as it was on December 2nd, that the Planning Commission find is considered the addendum to the Minnegan Declaration. Make all the required findings for the conditional use permit and special permit based on the evidence of the staff report, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit for Green Management Group of Humboldt, subject to the amended conditions of approval. The applicant, the agent for the applicant is here also for questions, and that concludes my presentation.
All right. Noah, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into the details, I just wanted to ask Byron, I didn't hear you mention, but what I recall, I think from the staff report, is that while the applicant is requesting to retain the use of the generator for the barn, for just, they're getting rid of most of their generators and replacing them with solar. They want to retain the use of an existing 25-kilowatt diesel generator to be used for the drying barn and residence, but they are also proposing to install battery, install battery capacity so that they could reduce the use of that generator from a maximum, to a maximum of 12 hours a day from 24 hours a day. And I just wondered if you could explain that a little bit more.
So, at the December 2nd meeting, it was brought up that the generators were going to be consolidated, and that batteries would be utilized. The, the commission did not come to a conclusion on approval or denial of this project at that time, and so, based on the discussion that happened at that meeting, the additional condition was, was added.
So, just to be clear, we're requiring them as a condition of operation to, to, if, well, I mean, we would, it's an option on the table, I guess, if we were to agree to their request, that we could allow the continued use of that generator, but condition it on installing battery backup power so that it would never be, so that it would be used for no more than 12 hours a day. Is that correct?
That was the proposal of the applicant when, prior to any discussion of removal of generators altogether.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Brian, I think you had your hand up ahead of Thomas, so I'm just going to go that route.
Thank you, Chairman. In the past, we set a rough cutoff at 80% of the total power usage being from renewable sources. Do we know if solar arrays are put in, but traditional generators are used for the drying? Approximately what percent of the total power needs of the project would be met by renewable sources?
I don't have that information, Meg.
No, we don't have that information.
All right, Thomas, you had a question as well?
Two things. First, staff, first off, correct me if I'm wrong, the 80% renewable energy, that's an ordinance 2.0, not 1.0, is that correct or incorrect? That's my understanding, yes. Okay. So, can staff, is it feasible for the McKay Track, the same section I read out earlier, 21002, that it's economically infeasible to require these projects, this project to basically stop using generator use?
Sure.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you, and, and it's really important to understand the context of how that's applied. That is applied in the context of considering additional mitigation measures to reduce impacts to a less than significant level. Sometimes mitigation that is proposed that could mitigate impacts to a less than significant level is so cost prohibitive that it's unfeasible. We're really not talking about that right here. This is not where we've identified that there's a significant adverse impact, and we're trying to mitigate it. We're operating under the context of the original environmental document that foresaw generators being utilized. And, and so, the thing that the commission can do here is to look at what the likely impacts are from the use of the generator, and then also to express those concerns and how a condition to limit the use of the generator would mitigate those, or limit those impacts, and incorporate that into the findings and evidence.
And, Mr. Chairman, we could make that a condition based on a finding that it's in the best interest of the public health, safety, and welfare, correct?
I believe you could, Director. Maybe you can speak to that, but...
First, you would need to want, you would need to identify how the use of the generator is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and then identify how that's addressed by limiting the use of the generator.
Okay, well, I think we could do that if we wanted to as a group. Thank you, that's all for now for me. Thomas?
Finished, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So, I just want to point out that being as the generator use is in the baseline sequo document for the ordinance 1.0, I have a hard time coming to any findings that would support anything more than what the applicant has offered. The applicant has offered to drastically reduce baseline generator usage, and I have a hard time with the condition that staff has put forward, and I can't find the findings to support, and I would be very unfortunate to not have the findings and then have the project appealed, potentially, if that condition was put on.
Well, my response to that would be that back when the 1.0 environmental documentation was done, there have been substantial changes to the background setting with regards to drought and fire, of, you know, fire hazard, and that would be a sufficient basis upon which to add additional conditions.
All right, let's, before we get into back and forth, we'll have time for that. This was just to ask staff questions at this point, and I'd like to open it up to the public, and then we can bring it back and have that discussion. So, is there any other questions for staff at this point? All right, seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item? Steven Liu, go ahead.
Hello, this is Steven Liu. I'm the agent for the applicant. I wanted to make a clarification that in, none of the correspondence that was submitted to staff was proposing a battery reduction, like, there was discussed at the last hearing, but it was not put forth in any of the final correspondence with the county, that a battery system as a, as a condition of approval and as a condition of the operation would be incorporated to offset the 25 KW generator usage. That, that's a substantial financial impact, and it's not part of this, what is being proposed with what is already being offered as far as discontinuing the use of portable gasoline-powered generators at the... gasoline powered generators at the remote cultivation sites. Um, what is being proposed is to convert the, the, the fan, the power for the fans and the string lights over to solar with battery backup. So all cultivation with respect to greenhouse operations would be powered entirely off solar with, um, without any solar backup or without any generator backup. Um, all generator use would be limited to the 25 KW diesel generator. Um, I wanted to point out a couple of other considerations that are being discussed with respect to conditions and, uh, generator usage. Um, I know we're bringing up the 2.0, um, 80% limit, um, and bringing that back onto these 1.0 projects. It brings up an interesting issue where the, the, the problem is why these generators are needed is because it's an intense power demand for a short period. So we're talking about, um, a lot of power to power dehumidifiers, fans and, um, AC units, uh, to basically dry the product, uh, for four to six weeks, four to eight weeks out of the year, depending if they're doing one or two runs, maybe more if they're doing, uh, more runs than that. But it's, it's a very intense power usage. And so, but for a total of maybe one month or two months out of the year. So the cost of investing in renewable energy infrastructure for such a short period, it makes it, it doesn't scale properly. And, and you know, they could design a larger solar array to run more lights in the greenhouses just to meet that 80% window so they can get that 20% on generator for drying. And it meets the intent of the regulation or the letter of the regulation, but it may not necessarily meet the intent of, of the, of you as the deciding body of trying to limit impact and limit development in these more remote areas. I also wanted to point out two, two issues. One is that we're talking about the use of diesel generators. Diesel is not volatile. It's not flammable. You could take a light, a match and throw it in a diesel tank. It won't burst into flames. You do the same thing to a gasoline tank. It'll burst into flames. Propane is flammable. Um, and I also wanted to point out that if a battery array catches fire, if a Tesla car, a Tesla catches, uh, fire, the recommendation is you let it burn because those are very difficult fires to put out. There's such a concentrated amount of energy. If our concern is the potential for fire, then we should be encouraging the use of diesel generators and not encouraging the use of concentrated power sources in the form of battery systems. And the other issue that was previously discussed was to determine if PGE power would be available here. And one of the commissioners indicated for a three and a half mile run, we would talk about three and a half million dollars. And let's put aside the cost of that development and think of the negative externalities of bulldozing three and a half miles worth of trees, the linear impact, and then how many, the fire safety with across that. There's a lot of controversy now around about PGE, um, tearing down lots of trees for projects.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, Stephen. I've given you some leeway because you're an applicant, but.
Okay. Um, I, so to be clear, uh, the applicant would not be in support of the, uh, the 12, the battery backup for the, the 25 KW generator, um, but they will, uh, remove the use of the portable generators and, um, proceed with with solar for the majority of the cultivation operation. And it's just an existing generator baseline use and for the dry barn. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, 7429.
Hi, good evening. This is Robi Tenorio. I definitely support the transition to renewable power for the, um, lights and fans and things like that. Um, but I, I believe that, um, as to this idea of that everything is, uh, the baseline, running generators was what was, um, people were trying to bring the generators out of the hills, not to, um, permit them to run for 24 hours a day to, as Mr. Lou explained, the generator use for drying is very, very, um, significant because it has to go 24 hours a day. And if you're doing more than one harvest, if you're doing two, three, four harvests, you can, um, times that out and you're running a generator for months at a time, 24 hours a day. Um, I definitely support the suggestion of, uh, Commissioner Mitchell to conduct power needs assessment. There's always the option of doing less. Um, right now, I think the, the heat is on that everyone wants to do more, but you will never be able to make it on the state level by doing more. You have to go for craft cannabis, use the sun. And as commissioners, you have, uh, serving as a commissioner, you have discretion on every single project that comes before you. And right now I'm wondering what is, why is applicant feeling, feeling so righteous about their generators? What, what is supporting that? Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is 7108.
Hi, um, this is Bonnie B. Berry. I just wanted to add to the, you know, impacts on public health, safety and welfare with generators. The carbon emissions from these generators, I don't think the county's been paying any attention. And we have a climate action plan where we're supposed to be cutting back on, uh, the CO emissions. And so these generators that I don't, I don't believe that anybody, well, I guess a few people thought it was okay to run generators 24 hours a day, uh, to grow pine, but, um, I just really don't think that was the intention with the ordinance. And, um, yeah, so add the CO emissions and climate change, which is part of the drought, the lack of water, the fire danger, and also with the generators, there's fuel leaks and, and, uh, things with transporting it to the site. Okay, thank you.
Next caller is Margot Advisors. Margot Advisors.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. Hi, this is Kelly Flotus, Margot Advisors. Um, just wanted to make a few quick points. Um, one is to remind the commission that there are regulations in place by the state water board as well as the air quality management district related to generators. It's not as if these devices are totally unregulated, um, in operation in a permitted farm. Um, there is oversight and there are requirements that they have to meet. Um, the other thing I wanted to remind you of is that the board of supervisors did review the letter from the planning commission to them, and I believe that they were specific about if the commission is going to add additional requirements, that those requirements have to have specific needs that are documented. Um, and I believe, um, Director Ford can provide, um, more clarification in terms of what the board specifically was requesting, if additional conditions are going to be added. The challenge was that, um, if folks have gone through all of the process over the last four or five, so going to be six years, um, in this process, um, and, um, the commission is not allowing them to move forward. These are going to get appealed to the board of supervisors. So it's really important that we understand the full, uh, scope of the regulations that people are following, um, through all of the agencies and all of the oversight that is being required by these folks for all of their power uses, whether that be generators, solar or so forth. Um, and so I just wanted to remind the commission of that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other public that wishes to speak on this item? All right. See you none. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. And there's a couple of hands up. Give me a second here. Come on. There it is. Um, Brian, you have your hand up and then Thomas.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, uh, based on the public testimony and my previous, um, discussions that I think that having the applicant do a simple, you know, uh, electricity and energy needs assessment would easily determine whether or not what they're proposing would meet the 80% threshold or not. Um, and I'm sure there are myriad ways in which if they fell a little short that they could get to that point, but I feel strongly that having generators in the hill forever is not in the best interest of the public health, safety and welfare, especially in the direction that the drought and other, uh, you know, drying out conditions, die, dead and dying trees, um, and the loss of animal habitat from all these fires. All that combined, I feel like we need to be extra cautious, um, on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas, you're next, then Mike Newman.
So if we're, our finding is fire safety, can we condition that the generator shed has, I've seen them out there before, there's fixed foam fire extinguishers that basically when they're heats up to a certain temperature, it automatically shoots the foam onto whatever the heat source is. I mean, if we're trying to mitigate fire, um, that's how I think we would condition a project to mitigate that fire concern. Um, and, uh, 80%, I'm just gonna say it again, 80% is energy use, uh, renewable is in ordinance 2.0, not 1.0. And we do have our baseline SEQA documentations, and I don't see, I don't see how if they're going to offer solar to get below baseline for their lighting and fan use for the cultivation activities. And this would just be for drying and ancillary propagation for short periods of time throughout the year. Um, I believe this project as presented is below baseline, so I have a hard time finding, getting to the findings to support, uh, ending generator use.
Okay. Mike Newman?
Yes, thank, thank you, Chair. Um, so I'm leaning towards what Commissioner Mulder is talking about there. Um, I'm in that same mindset. I, I had a question regarding the staff report here on page seven, uh, under the previous page heading biological resources. It would be the, um, paragraph right at the top of page seven. So, um, what the applicant's agent was talking about, about the applicant proposing to develop battery storage system, um, I want to make sure it's perfectly clear what is the, um, we're bending here on, on the, um, uh, report for, um, passing this on the recommended conditions that if the applicant is not talking about developing a battery storage system for the drying barn, um, and just going with a solar array and all of that, um, that, uh, it would be sufficient. Because it's just put up by the applicant as, um, basically, uh, um, I don't know, uh, help get us towards a decision to say yes.
I, yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner Newman. I think I can address your question. Um, in the executive summary, um, it does talk about the 12 hour limiting the genera- generator uses to 12 hours. Um, that I think was taken from, um, correspondence, um, that is also included in the staff report attachment three, but essentially what the agent was saying is due to fishing game concerns with NSO, they're going to limit it to daylight hours only. Um, so of course, that fluctuates throughout the year and, um, 12 hours might not been an appropriate, uh, label there. However, condition number 21 talks about moving to solar with the battery backup and the number of hours is not specified within the condition. So perhaps, um, to convince, condition number 21 is sufficient or could use a revision.
So there is nothing about batteries?
Um, it does talk about moving to the solar array with the battery backup in condition number 21, but doesn't specify for using the generator only for 12 hours.
Thomas, is your hand back up or is that still up? Go ahead, Thomas. And then Peggy.
So question for staff. Um, is it my turn to go, Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Question for staff. Um, I was hearing what was being said there, and then I relooked at the plot plan. I do see that there is a cabin or resident structures on the property. If, would there be any requirement for generator use if that 25 KW only powered that house? Could it run 24/7 without being in violation of any county code?
I would, yeah, I think, yeah, that the residence is a, a part of the cannabis project.
So if, if that's the case, why couldn't the house appropriate the amount of, or appropriate power to the cannabis project if by the generator use is legal under the use of a house, if there's a residence there, that generator would already be running 24/7 without regulations. I don't see why we couldn't appropriate some of that residential power instead of having multiple power sources, just throwing out an idea here.
I'm gonna say Peggy next. I'm not sure. The order, and then Melanie.
So I don't know, you know, if you can spend your way into a solar system that's going to be sufficient to run all of what you might need in this building or, or other operations throughout the county without having, you know, a, uh, an engineer's estimate, cost estimate, um, and defining, you know, will a solar system even keep up with your needs? Because, I mean, I've worked in communities that rely totally on solar and without grid power, your, your solar is only going to last for so long and your battery backups are only going to last for so long. So for us to sit here and try to figure all this out in our head without knowing, you know, what does it cost? You know, does it cost $250,000? I mean, we just put solar on seven homes and it was like $400,000, you know, so you may not even be able, and then they're gonna, that solar's with battery is only going to last for so many days if you don't have grid power to recharge your, um, your batteries. So I don't know what it costs. I mean, if it, if it's $400,000, I agree. Like you can't expect somebody to spend $400,000 necessarily to get, you know, um, 80% power, or maybe they'll never get 80% power because it's just not, uh, feasible. I mean, try, try using solar in the wintertime. It doesn't work. Um, so I think that, you know, we're kind of just stabbing in the dark, not knowing, um, an engineer's estimate, a cost estimate, like what does it cost to generate so much power? And what does it, how much power is needed to run these operations? You know, you're back to what Brian said, you need an energy study. And if it's so cost prohibitive, then, you know, you may never get there. So saying you have to be 80% when you can never become 80% might be a problem.
Go ahead, Melanie, and then.
Thank you, Chair. I just had a question, uh, for the planner. So the, the CDFW request that the generator be on during only daylight hours, that didn't make it in there as a, as a condition?
Take.
Oh, yeah, I could, thank you. I was just, I wanted to look at the conditions of approval. So my, um, my sense is, is that what the agent was referring to was a lake, a final lake and stream bed alteration agreement work. My understanding is that, um, CDFW and the water board have been out to the, the site, um, to talk about, um, just general improvements that can be made. And so through the onsite conversations or the final lake and stream bed alteration agreement, I believe that is, uh, where the context of, of that, uh, NSO CDFW comment comes from. The conditions of approval, um, number 17 do require that the applicant require with the final LSA and requirements. LSA and requirements of CDFW, um, so that's where I see the connection there.
Okay, so that will probably be something they will be required to do. You know, at, at a later date with the CDFW.
Yeah, as they have agreements with them and work through their project, they, they will um could have to comply with those per our conditions.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
Think the director'd like to make a comment about.
Actually, I want to ask, thank you Chair, I want to ask Mr. Ryan a question. So in the CDFW comments or in our background research, did we identify that there were sensitive species? Certain birds um that may be affected by generator noise?
Uh, no, we did not. We found that the um, in the um, that the owl. Activity center observations were over a mile away from the project.
So is there any reason to be concerned in this particular case about noise from a biological standpoint?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Melanie, is your hand still up or you just didn't take it down? Alright.
It's still up.
Oh, it's, okay, go ahead then.
I know it, I just lowered it.
Okay, thank you. I thought you meant you had another question, sorry.
No, thank you.
So we kind of just keep going around in circles about this electrical, but um, maybe. Somebody will come up with an idea on that, make it in their motion. Um, I'm gonna change the subject matter to the roads, that seems to be. Where I find the most concern. Um, while the pictures look great and the road looks good, I, I. Will be against this project because I have a problem with the road self-evaluation, um, almost five miles of road. It's gravel. I mean, it looks like a pretty good road, but you know, um, you can't tell. And not everybody has the, the, the knowledge to be able to tell. I don't know if there's one inch of gravel there, there's six inches of gravel there. So I feel that uh a professional needs to evaluate the road before you're gonna allow. Heavy equipment to be going across that. And I'm gonna stick to that and I will justify it with a public safety issue uh. And I'll leave it at that. Alright, so anybody got any thoughts on this one? Or they want to go with it? Thomas, you got your hand up?
Yes, I turned to the um road evaluation, I believe this was done by an engineer.
No, it's the self, it, they have the self-road evaluation, but. There was an engineer that, that also had information there. I just don't believe in the self, the road self-evaluation, it needs to go bye-bye.
Okay.
Making the point.
So Chair, you're throwing the baby out with the bathwater?
Maybe in a sense, I just, I think they need to get rid of that piece of paper. Doesn't mean anything, it won't stand up to anything. Person who's checking that box doesn't have the qualifications to check that box, is what I'm saying. Alright. So where we want to go with this one, Thomas, you got your hand up?
So I'm just, I'm gonna, page seventy-eight Chair.
Yes.
This road is signed um.
By an it.
By an engineer.
I agree. I'm not arguing that.
Okay. Okay.
But there's also the, the box on the form, and I don't remember, I don't know the page, I. That's the self-evaluation where you check the box and say the road meets a class four standard. You know, it's a joke.
Would the engineers report supersede that self-evaluation though? That's, that's where I, I would, that's where I'm leaning on.
I would say yes, but I'm saying that the form shouldn't be in there. I'm just one person, it's just my opinion.
I had a question, yeah, i- it's in regards to the roads, I, I have a question for the. Uh, Director, I, I'm wondering, you know, where we left this last. Are we, not in this case, because we do have the engineer report, but. Are we allowed to request a, an inspection by Public Works? In the cases where there's a self-declaration of a class four road. That we might have visited or have looked at in some way and have doubts on.
Sure. Yeah, Commissioner McFor, I think that is the um question that's really on point. Is that the premise behind this is that if the commission does not trust. The road evaluation, even one prepared by an engineer, that it be referred to Public Works to do an independent analysis.
Right, so we, we can add that as a condition, correct?
Well, um, so normally if you doubt the veracity of information that's being presented. Upon which you're basing a decision, it's good to have that verified before you take action.
Okay, so we would have to uh send it back then and request that and then have it come back to us?
Unfortunately, I think that would be the appropriate process, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, not in this particular case perhaps, but that's, I think that's helpful for us all to know. Thank you.
Thomas, I saw your hand go up and then went down, I don't know where. Other questions or somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Well, from what I've heard on all of this and the changes that have occurred. I'm willing to make the motion to adopt the resolution, find the commission is considered the addendum to the adopted mitigated. Negative declaration to the CMN L U O pursuant to section fifteen one six four. Of state sequel guidelines, make all of the required findings for approval. Of the conditional use permit and special permit and approve green management group of Humboldt LLC project. As recommended by staff, subject to recommended conditions. And I don't recall any other really. Conditions that were thrown out there. Um, Thomas, did you have something or?
I would second that, but entertain if you'd be willing to remove condition twenty-one about the generator use.
That's on page, what, so I can go right to it here?
Twenty-six, condition number twenty-one.
I, I don't agree with removing that condition.
There's not the findings to support it.
Um, that was agreed upon by the client. That was a concession.
Okay, maybe I missed where that was, cuz I thought they were trying to get. Leave the generator for just one generator. At the dry barn and residence.
Okay, that could be, can we have a little clarification from staff on that, on twenty-one?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Mulder is correct, the, so the. The planning department recommendation is to cease all generator use by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The applicant is, does not agree with that, and the applicant is requesting that the generator in the drive aren't processing. Be allowed to continue for the life of the project.
Okay, yes, I would be amenable to that, um, Commissioner Mulder. Uh, to switch it to what the applicant is uh willing to do with the uh one diesel generator then.
Okay, I would support that then, thank you, and can staff clarify if uh that generator was used? For the residence and the dry barn? Um, if it was just used for the residence, there would be no restrictions, is that correct or incorrect?
There are no restrictions on the use of the generator associated with the residence.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted. Um, I'd just like to, I just asked the director a question to the side. I didn't realize that the applicant or uh Stephen Lou was a engineer, so I'm gonna remove my concern on the road. He's, he's the one who signed the road, I did not know that he was, I thought he was just a project um. Consultant, I, I didn't realize that, so I, I removed my concern on this particular project. Because he put his signature on the line, so just wanted to clarify that. So I think we had a motion there, but it, I'd like to have it. Restated and I'm not sure if we had a second at all. Who did, who was the second? Mulder, okay, so Mike was the first and, and Thomas was the second. Alright, any further discussion then?
So it's the subject conditions and then replacing condition twenty-one with what the applicant agreed. Was agreeable to do um on the top of page seven there in that first paragraph regarding the. Diesel generator.
Second's in agreement with that?
And, and it is about the um solar too, about ceasing all other generators. Uh, before honor before December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five, so it's that, that whole paragraph in there. Is replacing uh subject uh recommendation twenty-one uh by staff on page. Twenty-six it is, yeah, twenty-six.
This second is in agreement with what? Most, okay, no, I see you have your hand up, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to, to state that I think I am in support of this motion, but I want to clarify that. I really do think it's important that the generator in question, the one that would remain, is one that's already attached to a domicile. I would not, excuse me, sorry about that, I would not necessarily feel comfortable about endorsing endless generator use in the future. For the drying shed, but given that it does exist and it's attached to a domestic use, and it would already be there, and given the applicant's. Um, concession to get rid of the gasoline generators around the property and switch to solar, I find myself agreeing with this motion.
Yes, it, it does say drying barn and residence.
I agree with that as well then.
Any further discussion? Okay, CNN Laura, I would ask for a roll call vote, please.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Brian Mitch?
No.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Uh, okay, motion carries five to two, so the project is approved. Thank you, everybody. Um, it's seven twenty-three and be, I think before we get started on the next project, we'll take a five-minute break. And we will uh come back, alright? Alright, welcome back everyone. Um, that brings us to item number four. The Green Crows LLC conditional use permit in the Bimbo area, and I would ask for a staff report, please.
Okay, here we go. This is the Green Crows project. It is in the Bimbo area. The project consists of fourteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet of existing cultivation. Which would be cons- would consist of one thousand eight hundred and forty square feet of mixed light and about thirteen thousand square feet of outdoor. A two thousand watt solar power system supplies all the power for the current cultivation activities. And the mixed light will actually be conditioned upon renewable energy plan or PG&E power drop. As all detail on the next slide. Water usage is currently a hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons per year. And that's for the existing outdoor, and it would increase to upwards of two hundred and thirty thousand gallons. If up to three harvests, harvests were obtained from the eighteen hundred forty square feet of mixed light. Irrigation water is provided by a rain catchment system. Which is fed into a, a two hundred thousand gallon water storage tanks and bladders. Rain catchment from existing and proposed roofs is planned and modeled. To be able to capture up to four hundred thousand gallons. And addition, hard tanks are proposed to replace those existing bladders. And additional tanks are proposed to bring up the total rainwater storage capture. To three hundred and thirty-nine thousand gallons. Which is well in excess of the maximum estimate water usage of two hundred and twenty-nine thousand gallons. If three harvests were obtained from the mixed light greenhouses. The applicant is also proposing some infrastructure replacements and developments on the parcel. And they include a processing and storage structure, a propagation greenhouse in the residence. So I've just pulled out some selected conditions of approval from the staff report, just to highlight how the project would be conditioned. As I mentioned, the mixed light cultivation would support up to three harvests, but it's only allowed. If the ongoing Pacific gas and electric power lines are developed along Red Rock Road. Um, or additional renewable energy is supplied, such as augmenting their existing solar system. In the absence of enough renewable electricity, the applicant will abstain from the eighteen hundred forty square feet of mixed light. We've incorporated all the recommendations of the site management plan, the timber conversion report. And the lake and stream bed alteration agreement into the conditions. And we've conditioned the, that they implement the recommendations of the engineer authored road evaluation report. Particularly for Fish Canyon Road, which is the lower access road. And there were several problems with that road that were identified. And the recommendations of the public works review referral response is also made a condition. Red Rock Road, which is the road on the upper portion of the parcel, is a private road. Used to access the project from the north, and it is maintained regularly by the Bimbo Ranch Road Association. And the applicant has stated they are an active member. The project was also detailed to produce a revised water catchment system report. That details those planned improvements to water capture, bladder replacement and additional storage. Here's just a USGS topo and an aerial, I've drawn in the parcel, you can see here. So there's two access, one from Fish Canyon Road and one from Red Rock Road to the north. And you can just see a snapshot here of the site plan that's included in the staff report. Where the, there is two cultivation areas essentially on the parcel. Thank you, and I believe the agent, uh, the applicant and a engineer are on the call. To take any questions.
Stay with us and give me back the screen. Uh, Noah, you have your hand up.
Uh, sorry, I just realized it's still up from the last item.
Okay, I wasn't sure about that.
Yeah.
Uh, does anybody have a question for staff? I have one then, since nobody else does. Um, this may be, uh, the director may answer this or. Jordan may know, but uh I noticed in the road evaluation, I mean, it was done by a, a licensed engineer and that's great. Um, but one of the things I noticed was there were several readings that were um. exceeding 17% grade, which if I, my memory serves me, that's CDF standard for, for roads, they can't exceed 17%. So, is it okay if they exceed 17%? If you have an engineer sign off on it, or who gets to the, who, who has the overriding say there? That, I, I, I'm just not clear. That's, I'm just asking for clarity.
That's why Jordan didn't look up. Question for you. Are, within the recommendation, are the recommendations to provide paving or addressed road in those areas that exceed 17%?
I'd have to refer to the detailed conditions of approval. Just give me.
I guess my question is, maybe the applicant has talked to CDF or something. I just was under the understanding that CDF wouldn't give their blessing if it was over 17%.
So, for fire safe access, I think typically you're correct. This is an agricultural activity. And, and so, one of the things that we've attempted to do is make the roads, make sure the roads have capacity and are passable. In limited sections, I do believe a certain degree of slope is acceptable, but normally there may be some, if it's beyond a certain length.
One of the recommendations from DTN Engineering for the Fish Canyon Road Access includes repair, such as re-establishing a stable slope with grading and placement of rock slope protection on the slope. But it does not address specific areas of steep incline as necessary improvements.
And I didn't see anything in CDF's referral that, that brought that up. That's, I, that was more of an information thing. I, I don't know. I know projects that have, not cannabis projects, but other projects that have been denied for a lot, that would be a lot less impactful and have a lot less traffic, just, you know, a house out there, you know, denied because it couldn't meet the CDF standards for length and steepness of slope. It seems like we pick and choose which projects we enforce that issue on, and cannabis seems to be getting a pass on it. So, I have concerns that it's not being equitable, equitably used, if that's the condition. So, anyhow, I don't know if there's any of the applicant or the engineer, they said the engineer was with us. So, when we get, if he wants to respond to that, I'd be open to hearing what he has to say. So, Thomas, I see you have your hand up. Maybe when we get to the public, the engineer will be available. Go ahead, Thomas.
Oh, I was just, um, my daughter's grandparents own a, used to own a partial, her grandmother since passed, but used to own a partial, a couple parcels over from there. No financial interest one way or another. But the road, the Lower Fish Canyon Road you're talking about is been subpar since my daughter was born. It, she'll be 21 in June, so I'm, I'm curious if the applicant at some point in time can answer how much that lower road is used, unless there's specific improvements made.
Is there any other questions for staff now, and, and we'll, if not, we'll open it up to the public, and hopefully the applicant and the engineer will be available, so.
Quick question.
Go ahead, Mike.
So, is that recommendation about the roads, number 16, is that what we're talking about? Page 20?
That's correct. That's the detailed interpretation of the recommendations from the engineered authored road evaluation report.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I'm gonna open this up for public comment, and hopefully we'll have the applicant there as well. So, would anybody like to speak on this project? Nobody would like to speak. Is the applicant available, or now there's a hand up. Mica Cook? Mika, I'm not sure pronunciation, so I apologize. Star six, unmute yourself. There you go.
Shoot, you need to get on right now. Hi, this is Mika. John Crowe, but he will just sign on shortly. I have contractor who's gonna be available in one minute two, who has come out and assessed the roads.
Okay. Now's the time that they would need to be available, so.
Of Stephen Berry Trucking and Law.
Okay. Is your engineer available by chance?
That was me misspeaking, Alan. It's the, who is on, who is about to call in is Stephen, or Lance of Stephen Berry Trucking, who's been, is contracted to do work on this road and has regularly done work on the road. The engineer from DTN Engineering, I do not think is on the call. I misspoke.
Okay. Okay, well, the engineer's the one I would want to talk to, but that's, that's here and there. Is anybody else wish to speak on this? Not? I'm gonna close the public comment. I'm gonna bring it back to the commission. Right. So, is there any further discussion on this, any further questions? Somebody want to make a motion?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the applicant's flexibility with regards to what they may find they can or cannot do, and are willing to scale back the project to match what they can in fact meet. And so, I'm willing to support the project and can make a motion once everyone else has a chance to say their piece.
Anybody else have any comments? I'll make a comment then. I don't see any other hands up. There is an engineer involved, so I'm gonna go along with this one while I, I think it's too far out. I, I think the road's substandard for what's gonna be traveling on it. I am gonna stand good to what I said, and that you need to have an engineer involved, but I need, I think that there needs to be some check on that, so I would suggest that maybe Public Works has to, to, you know, check it out when it's done, or CDF sign off on it, because I believe that the road issues, CDF will have, I, I believe, issues with the grades. And I think that, that somebody should be having to check these improvements that are, are recommended by the engineer that they're doing. So, go ahead, Mike.
That is part of the condition on number 16, is that Public Works is, they're met to the satisfaction of Public Works to satisfy the condition there.
And I just want to make sure it's on the record that they, they have that done. That's my point. Anybody else?
There.
It is. Well, whether it gets done or not is, is another thing, but it is written there. All right. I'll let my hand down. So, with that, would somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the item subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Laura, a roll call vote?
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes. Thank you, Laura. Motion carries seven zero. All right, got through another one. So, that brings us on to item number five, which is Solarc Solutions Incorporated Conditional Use Permit in the Edersburg area. Take a staff report.
Hello, commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Can you see my presentation all right?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Max Hoken. I'm presenting the Solarc Solutions Conditional Use Permit for you tonight. The proposed project is a conditional use permit for 18,092 square feet of existing cannabis cultivation. 8,000 square feet of that cultivation amount is mixed light, and 10,092 square feet of that is outdoor cultivation. Drying and storage will occur onsite. However, processing will occur offsite. Up to six individuals be onsite during peak operations, and power for this project is provided by a generator with solar alternatives proposed. Getting into the water resources, the annual water use estimated for this project is 216,700 gallons, which comes out to about 12 gallons per square foot. Irrigation water will be sourced from a surface point of diversion and the onsite 130,000 gallon pond. Existing available water storage is 290,000 gallons, which equates to 34% more storage capacity than the proposed annual water use amount. Access to the site is via a private access road from Wilder Ridge Road. Detailed road evaluation report was prepared for the project that indicates the private road can accommodate the traffic generated for the project. And this slide here is showing an aerial image of the cultivation area as proposed on the subject parcel. And that concludes my presentation for this evening. I'm available for any questions?
Any questions? All right. Done. I will open this up for public comment then. And the first caller is Mika Cook. Unmute, star six, unmute yourself. Now she's removed, so I'm assuming that means she doesn't want to speak. You removed her? Okay. So, anybody else want to speak on this item? All right. Seeing none. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Noah, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, I'm looking for the exact reference in this, the staff report, and I can't find it, but I remember reading it, and I made notes that I was confused about whether the pond is considered allowable for irrigation, because it seems that there's, there's, at least it's being presumptively determined to be connected to surface waters. I, I, I'm not, can you clarify whether the pond is considered to be allowed for irrigation? Or if they have to make some showing to be allowed to use it for irrigation?
Absolutely. Great question, Commissioner Levy. Yes, the pond survey was done in 2018, which found that the pond is in fact connected to surface waters of the state. That was not intended by its original design and what was approved under the Lake and Stream Bed Alteration Agreement approved in 2016, which was that it was to be constructed as an off-stream pond, not connected to surface waters of the state. In regards to its feasibility for the project and use, I would point your attention to condition number 19, which requires that the app can actually reduce cultivation amounts that fit with the amount of water that is provided by the surface point of diversion until such time that the pond can be re-engineered so that it is no longer connected to surface waters of the state.
Okay, thank you. That, that clarifies. So, it's already in the conditions, the required conditions that they do so. Yeah.
Correct. Any other questions for staff or anything?
I just wanted to ask, it, it talks about several northern spotted owl studies and mitigations to address them, but I couldn't see where it said how close any nests were to the location and how recently the nest may have been utilized.
Answer that, Max?
Yes. So, I'm, I'm looking to the staff report currently in regards to that. So, the nearest positive sighting is approximately 600 feet away from the closest cultivation area, which is an outdoor cultivation area. And the project has had several owl studies performed. In fact, 14 owl surveys were performed onsite, eight of which occurring between March 28th and 2018 and August 23rd of that same year. And the other six occurred in 2019, and the report did conclude that with the mitigation measures that are conditioned within, that no significant impacts to NSO are expected to occur.
Thank you for that answer.
Is the this one?
Sure. I'm happy to make a motion, not hearing any other dissent or questions. I would move that we adopt the resolution to find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted MND for the CMM L U O pursuant to section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines. Make all the required files for approval of the CUP, and approve the Solarc Solutions, Inc. project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Laura, roll call vote, please.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Project proves unanimous. Okay, that brings us on to item number six. Forever Loving Humble, Inc. Conditional Use Permit in the Myers Flat Area.
Eric, can I make some ex parte disclosure before the staff report? So, this is the closest project that's been to any properties I own, so I just wanted to disclose the closest proximity. It's roughly three quarters of a mile from a partial I own that has absolutely zero cannabis on it, and it's probably closer three quarters of a mile to a half a mile from a project that has approved cannabis operations. We do not share any roads. It's different mountain ridges. Do not share any water sources as my sources, I believe, are non-diversionary, and this project is rain catchment. So, just want that fully disclosed out there on the table, and I don't believe I have any conflicts, and I believe I can participate.
Thank you for that. All right. Go ahead, Abby.
Okay, so. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes, it's a split screen.
All right. My name is Abby. This is the Forever Loving Humble, Inc. project application one, two, four, three, six. The application is located, the project site is located in the Myers Flat area. The proposed project, um, is a conditional use permit for thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet of cultivation, of which ten thousand square feet is outdoor cultivation and twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet is mixed light cultivation. On May seventeenth, twenty sixteen, uh, CDFW, the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the State Water Resources Control Board conducted a site inspection, which resulted in a notice of violation being issued by CDFW for the following fishing game code violations. For the construction of two on-stream ponds on unnamed tributary Selt Creek, the construction and maintenance of five rotor stream crossings on unnamed tributary Selt Creek, the filling of a stream channel with sediment from pond failure and/or dam construction, and the excavation of two hundred and fifty linear feet of stream channel. A environmental impact assessment was prepared by CDFW for the subject parcel parcel, which documented the following impacts resulting from violations. Uh, substantial degradation of Elk Creek and its unnamed tributaries, impairment of natural hydrology and unpermitted impoundment in the versions of waters of the state for irrigation, delivery of sediment downstream deleterious to aquatic habitat, and direct discharge of large volumes of water and sediment to waters of the state. On December third, twenty twenty-one, um, I reached out to CDFW for, um, to confirm that the notice of violation issued by their department had been resolved. Uh, at that time, they had identified additional ground disturbance that occurred between August twenty twenty-one and October twenty twenty-one. And it stated that, um, they would, would have to conduct an additional site visit to inspect near-stream alterations. Now I'm going to discuss violate, the violation history with the State Water Resources Control Board. So on October twelfth, twenty sixteen, the Regional Water Quality Control Board issued a cleanup and abatement order for the following violations. Construction of private roads lacking adequate stream crossings, erosion control or sediment containment features, the operation of heavy equipment and water courses, and the lack of or inadequate stream crossings representing direct and unauthorized discharge to tributaries of Elk Creek, the failure of one of the reservoirs, which has subsequently, uh, been reconstructed, resulted in the placement of a large pile of earth and spoils in a wetland and discharge of the turbid water to tributaries of Elk Creek. And the Regional Water Quality Control Board staff estimated a hundred and forty-one thousand seven hundred and twenty-six cubic feet of earth and material was deposited into stream beds and wetlands. The cleanup and abatement order required the applicant to clean up and abate degraded and disturbed areas, um, to prevent for the sediment discharge to Elk Creek, which is a class one water course. So the cleanup and abatement order, um, had a timeline for the applicant. They were supposed to, um, submit a completion report to the, um, Regional Water Quality, or the State Water Resources Control Board by September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. On January fifteenth, twenty seventeen, the applicant submitted a, um, restoration and monitoring plan. It's going to be, uh, referred to as an RMP, which estimated the resolution of the CAO could be completed by October of twenty eighteen. On July thirty-first, twenty nineteen, a notice of required action was submitted to the applicant by the Office of Enforcement for failure to adhere to the established deadline and submit the completion report by September thirtieth, twenty seventeen. They were granted an extension, an extension until August thirtieth, twenty nineteen. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty, the applicant was issued a notice of violation, uh, by the SWRCD Office of Enforcement for four violations of the cleanup and abatement order. Uh, one, the applicant had not completed the corrective actions outlined in the restoration and monitoring plan. The submitted completion report failed to document the completion of the restoration and monitoring plan. They failed to assess impacts to Elk Creek, its unnamed tributaries, and the wetland area from unauthorized activities on the property and restoration of all wet meadows and wetlands. And they failed to provide compensatory mitigation for any temporal and permanent impacts to wet meadows, wetlands, and, um, to unnamed tributaries to Elk Creek. Emails, uh, correspondence that was shared with our department found that the, um, SWRCD Office of Enforcement and North Point Consulting, um, or the SWRCD Office of Enforcement had reached out to the consultant and the applicant multiple times to try and have the cleanup and abatement order resolved by October first, twenty twenty-one. But to date, the cleanup and abatement order was, remains unresolved. The applicant did make, um, steps to comply with the cleanup and abatement order. They've completed a botanical survey and a wetland delineation, but the, um, final completion report has not been submitted to the State Water Resources Control Board. Now I'll just cover the Humboldt County Code violations. So, um, on January fourth, twenty eighteen, the applicant executed a compliance agreement to obtain an interim permit. They were, they, um, were notified that if they expanded their cultivation beyond the existing footprint, that it would be in violation of the interim permit, Humboldt County Code and state law, and it could result in cancellation or revocation of their permit. On February thirteenth, twenty twenty, the applicant submitted a cultivation declaration, reducing their cultivation area to zero, essentially stating that they weren't going to be cultivating that season. And then in December, on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty, we, um, identified cultivation on the parcel and the applicant was issued a violation letter. They, um, had not only cultivated their, um, their granted square footage under the interim permit, but they had also, um, expanded their cultivation area, so they paid a eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollar, um, penalty fee. In May of twenty twenty-one, a search warrant was served, um, and Humboldt County Code Enforcement was in attendance. The applicant was issued a violation letter because they had, um, additional mixed light cultivation over what was authorized under the interim permit. And they were also, um, sent a compliance agreement with our Code Enforcement Division to resolve violations that were identified during services of the warrant. Um, the applicant did pay the penalty amount of twenty-one thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars, but the compliance agreement was, um, not returned to our department. On November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, our department identified additional ground disturbance. A new cultivation area was created in proximity to a documented wetland in violation of the stream side management area, wetland ordinance. And, um, at that time, the compliance agreement had not been returned. So the applicant was sent a notice letting them know that the project was going to be taken forward to hearing with a recommendation for denial. I've provided some aerial imagery here. The left side dated October twenty twenty is the existing footprint of the project. And the right photo, um, dated October twenty twenty-one, you can see that a new cultivation area was created in the northeast corner of the property without, um, consultation with our department. The applicant submitted, um, a revised site plan here. You can see that it now represents the existing site conditions and all the areas that are, um, in the lime green. Those are where documented wetlands have been, um, identified on the property. And it also now shows the cultivation area, um, in the northeast corner. Another supplemental that you received tonight, um, one was from the applicant, a letter to the Commission, and then there were two letters submitted that were in support of the project from neighbors, um, of the applicant. Given that the applicant has violated state law and Humboldt County Code, um, staff recommend that the Commission find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to State Secret guidelines, section one, five, two, seven, zero, and make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Forever Loving Humble, Inc. project. And the, um, agent is Praj White and the applicant is Corey, and there are any attendees list if you have questions for them.
Thank you, Abby. Uh, Thomas, do you have a question for staff?
Couple of questions, um, some of them because it's close to property I own. I hear different things, um, just within the community. First off though, if this project is denied, um, tonight, is there a pathway forward under ordinance two point oh?
This, um, project site is not located in an impacted watershed, so I'm confident that they're, um, capable of reapplying under two point oh.
Okay, and then a couple of questions I have in
The director.
Just to be clear, there's, there's two components here. Ms. Strickland, just make sure we're clear on both of them. One is the, uh, watershed. The second is the zoning. Is the zoning appropriate?
Uh, the zoning is appropriate, but one thing I forgot to add is that the cleanup and abatement order remains unresolved. So I think that's also something that would have to be resolved prior to a new, um, permitting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Thomas, sorry.
Yeah. No worries. I, I understood, but I appreciate that for the record, all the violations. On the incident on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, um, were any cannabis plants taken that were, was the cannabis plants in the ground taken down or was it shown to be those were being grown in violation? Or were they left?
I don't believe any cannabis was eradicated during the, that date.
Okay, so then, this is the other part that I've heard hearsay within the community. It was any financial resources taken from the property owner by governmental agencies, more specifically Department of Fish and Wildlife?
Based on what I've heard from the applicant, that statement would be true, but from what I read in the warrant inspection report, um, there was no documentation of that.
Okay. I'll leave it there for right now. Hopefully that, um, applicant or agent can speak to that.
Cliff Johnson.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Bongio. I just wanted to add another, uh, data point for Commissioner Mulder's question about whether this site could reapply under ordinance two point oh. The site is within a half of a mile of a northern spotted owl activity center. And so that may very well complicate things, uh, for permitting under two point oh, given the additional restrictions, uh, to protect the species in that ordinance.
Melanie McCaver?
Oh, yes, thank you, Chair. I, I was just wondering, uh, Commissioner Mulder, those questions, were they because you feel like we wouldn't be able to make the findings if, for example, they took materials? I, I'm just unclear as to what you're getting at about one. Thank you.
Is it okay for me to respond to that, Chair?
Yes, please do.
So the, if cannabis plants were being taken, I would find it would, obviously there would be a lot more violations going on other than the code, you know, with violations with, uh, the state cannabis laws and all that kind of stuff. Obviously, I would be under the impression that plants were properly tagged and documented, so that's where I was asking that question. And then the reason for the financial resources question is, um, if, if a government agency, you know, took somebody's financial resources, i.e., uh, cash, it would make it pretty hard to pay fines and consultants and all those other kind of things. So that's why I asked the questions.
All right, any other questions for staff before we open this up for the public and hopefully the applicant? Because I'd love to hear what they have to say. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. And Sue Moore, you're the first.
Did I unmute it or not?
Yes, you're there. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just have a question because it's something I just can't grasp. I read this entire, um, application with all the violations. I'm just trying to understand, with all the violations that were documented by the agencies and for such a long period of time, how is it possible that this site continues to operate? And even more so that additional, um, structures have been installed? And yet you're considering it for approval. I don't, I still don't understand how these projects get here when such kind of, to me, egregious violations have been continuing. And I just don't understand, so that's why I'm asking the question. It's as simple as that.
I'm hoping I can have that same question explained. Thank you. Would anybody like to tackle that one from staff?
But I think number one, we're not bringing it forward for approval.
No, it is to be. Okay. Any other public wishes to comment on this one? Praj White, go ahead. Go ahead, Praj.
Sorry about that. Chair Bongio, can you hear me now?
Yep, go ahead.
Excellent. Well, good evening, Chair Bongio, and through the Chair, Mission, and the Director. I respect your commitment, uh, to serving the community here. And I appreciate the opportunity to respond and support on this project. I have been involved in this project for quite some time. I believe that there is a big decision to make this evening about this project. I think that it's a question of is this project, um, denial recommendation based on the merits of the characters and individuals associated with the application? Or is it with respect to the property having the ability for carrying capacity and to support the project? The information submitted on record would indicate that the project was proposed to be going to renewable energy through PG&E with a rain catchment pond and has all the elements to avoid the wetlands, do the restoration and do the repairs necessary on the project. I'm absolutely aware of the CDF notice of violation and the State Water Resources Control Board. These, this, these real, really these violations started as were identified here in early twenty sixteen. And ultimately, all the actions were based on the ordinance passed in February of twenty-sixth, I believe, of two thousand sixteen. And immediately following, these violations occurred and the violations are really focused on the applicant's intent to create a rain catchment pond in pursuit of the coming ordinance and the new rules and the hearsay of what the requirements were going to be. The applicant made an absolute mistake and went out in a rainstorm and tried to construct a pond in a wet area on the lower portion of the property. This violation created, there was also other work as true for the issues associated on the property with impoundment on the stream and so forth. These items, again, all existed right before or during the ordinance implementation and that it was in an attempt to be responsible with the use and storage of water. It was all a complete mistake and misunderstanding by the applicant. They, all these issues that were created then continue to go on. There's been thousands and thousands of dollars, maybe even hundreds of thousands of dollars of fines levied by CDFW. The cleanup and abatement order is not yet complete and the violation penalties have not yet been assessed. I think that really, um, this applicant has been trying over and over and over to get things right and made many, many mistakes. I believe that the presentation from Abby, it was in whole, very true and accurate. I think that there are some errors that have been represented or maybe the emphasis on the fact that there was resolution of these items time and time again through this. We're talking about a violation that occurred in gross prior to and during implementation of the ordinance. Those issues have caused this applicant to suffer financially and struggle throughout the entire process moving forward. I, I want to identify that, you know, really on May nineteenth of twenty twenty-one, when the warrant was served and there was a multi-agency site visit, it turned out that the really Fish and Wildlife, Water Board, Sheriff, I'm not sure who else was involved, state licensing agencies, and really the outcome was that all of the product was, and cannabis was left on site. All of the operation was allowed to continue. I think that states a lot for the applicants who are attempting to be compliant and they actually were majoritely compliant. I can go into details, a little bit of the various violations that occurred. But the original, the penalty listed in the violation code table for twenty twenty was actually resolved and based on an error of was actually resolved and based on an error of expansion that was really an error in air photo regarding a bladder being counted as a greenhouse. Then there was the accusation of 432,500 square feet being grown as mixed light. In reality, there was 22,500 square feet of canopy, which was on site and later helped resolve all the issues. It was true that there were string lights left in all of the greenhouses and they were used for light extension, not for supplemental light during the cultivation and flowering. I understand under Humboldt County Code, that is still a violation. And so we go through this process and really, you know, from standpoint that I believe on record, there's information to demonstrate project can, this property can support the proposed project and be in compliance with county ordinance, CDFW and state water requirements.
You're gonna have to wrap it up, Praj.
The applicants and their families send their appreciation and they have paid lots of taxes. They've tried really, really hard to, right? I don't believe the county has to be a bad guy and deny this project. I believe that the hurdles through the regional water board and fish and wildlife are very large. And that in consideration, I would consider asking the commission to be able to continue this to a date uncertain for the rest of the facts to come forward. And given the history, it may be appropriate for the director to consider removing their allowance for an interim operation or even to not allow state license to be issued until such time that the site is cleaned up and the rain catchment is placed and everything is legal and ready to go. And I think that you should consider that, given all of the things that have happened in this county, trying to move projects forward from basically an outlaw operation to a compliant operation. We would find that these folks tried and tried and paid and paid. And they made plenty of mistakes along the way, but they really have tried. And maybe the right answer is that the interim permit operating in a non-compliant fashion really proved out to be a improper procedure for this property. And I would ask for consideration to maybe continue it to a date uncertain till the record could prove full compliance of a project and ask that a condition maybe be placed where they would not be able to operate on the interim and they wouldn't be able to operate till these known violations are completely resolved and then they could go forward. Thank you very much. I'm here and available for any questions.
Thank you, Praj. Uh, next caller is Corey Chase.
Yeah. Hi, this is Dennis Chase with Forever Loving Humboldt. And I I just want to say that on paper, it doesn't look good and, but it's not, that's not the story. I just, I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to have made it this far and, and I have much respect for everybody in this business. I just, uh, yeah, I don't know. I just don't want it to end like this. I really, I really care and I want to make things right and uh, I don't know, man. I just, I feel not like this is not the way it's supposed to end. I don't know. But I understand you guys got a job to do and you guys got to take care of the community. So I respect that too. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Daryl Schuster. Star six, unmute. Daryl? I guess he put his hand down. So, all right. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? See you none. I'm going to close the public comment and I'm going to bring this back to the commission.
I have a question for Praj, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Praj, you, in your statements, you made it seem almost as though the applicant made all of these errors in good faith. But my question to you is, were they not getting a constant stream of communication from county and state agencies telling them that they couldn't expand their footprint? And they had to do X, Y, Z. And they went ahead and cultivated without doing that. So I guess, how do we, how do we reconcile your statement that it was a sort of a simple mistake? When there's so much evidence of communication and deadlines that were missed and rules that were not followed?
Allow you to answer the question, Praj.
Okay. So Commissioner Mitchell through the chair, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I think to clarify then answer in the resolution of every accusation of illegal expansion, the result was that there were minor errors associated with the expansion. And that the most recent air photo that you saw that Abby put up on the screen showing the relocation and accused expansion, the reality of that was that we had identified all the wetland areas. And yes, the water board was extremely putting pressure me and the applicant to perform. And we're talking about final delivery of the wetland delineation and the restoration plan. And really, the financial impacts of 2021 really caused the delay and inability to pay for a mitigation report that is sitting on record at a consultant's office, but cannot be released until they can come up with some finances. So I think that the truth to the story is that there were these violations that caused huge grief in the beginning. The water board didn't tell them to move illegally. Fish and game didn't tell them to move illegally. There was one choice. You either quit or you move up to the areas of least impact. And the most, the last violation identified of them relocating was associated with moving to the area of least impact. And it was the applicant's choice that they were financially strapped and felt they need to keep it moving. And so I don't know if that exactly answers the question. I do know that there's still an interim permit a license and they are trying the best they can. Commissioner Mitchell, did that answer your question?
Uh, I think to the extent that it can be answered, it was. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Praj, while he's right there? No? Right. Thank you, Praj. Thomas, I saw you had your hand up. Did you have a comment or?
I just have a question for the applicant. And I mean, it's hearsay information. I heard it at the local grocery store, but you know, was, I don't know if it's viable that we can even ask this question, but the, the rumor at the local grocery store was DFW took a large sum of cash from them, which anyone could, if that happened, I don't know if that's.
I guess the question would be, what's that? How's that relevant to, to the, this? I'm not sure.
Not relevant.
If, if myself as a business person had, say, $50,000, I planned to cultivate my crop through the rest of the season and a governmental agency unlawfully, in my opinion, took that from me. Uh, when I wasn't violating other laws, it would make it very hard to operate a business because
I'll answer it.
You can't go refinance a house. That, that's why.
Yeah. Go ahead, Praj, if you want to answer that question.
Um, I was just making sure that the applicant would confirm that case and they did confirm that they had a sum of money taken on the day of May 19th, 2021, that was part of a payment from a local distribution company and was regulated and had the receipt with the cash that was taken from the distributor.
Okay. Anybody else? Guess that means I get to go since my hand's up. I try to restrain myself. In all the time I've been on this commission, I've never seen anything as egregious as this. I think people from many agencies should be fired at a minimum and if not prosecuted, I think that this land should have been removed from these people and dealt with. I can't even believe that we're talking about giving them a permit. This is, I know that the, the recommendation is to disapprove this, but somebody has so dropped the ball or so many agencies have. I don't know why the state attorney general isn't involved in this one. I, I'm disgusted what I see. I I don't, I don't even really know what else to say. If this was anybody else, this wasn't a cannabis project, this was anything. They'd be in jail right now. And yet we're talking about that we should give them more time to get it right. I mean, how much time do they need? They just keep doing things illegally over and over and over. I mean, where's, where's Earth First and Friends of the Eel and all these groups that are always out there, you know, trying to protect this kind of thing? I, I don't, I'm just totally mesmerized by this one. And disgusted is maybe the right word. So I'll shut up. Anybody else have any thoughts? I think I said enough.
I'm willing to make a motion.
Go ahead. Please, Melanie. Sorry.
All right. Oh, motion to find the project exempt from environmental review pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section 15270. Make the finding that the project site is in violation of Humboldt County Code and that the applicant has not provided the county the information necessary to make the required findings for approval and deny the Forever Loving Humboldt Incorporated project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
Well, I have a couple of questions. There was a proposal thrown out to continue it to a date uncertain and remove the all the permits so they couldn't cultivate. Is that something that is even feasible or realistic?
No.
And I'll, I'm asking staff.
Through the chair, it is within the discretion of the commission to do that. Obviously, staff have believes that this has gotten to a critical point where there, there really is no ability to recover here.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking that question is because it was brought up that that NSO that's documented on what used to be Sarness's, or no, actually, it's on HRC's property would pose a, a problem to this project to move forward under two point oh, because the, the end goal, hopefully for the county, is everything cleaned up and all the violations cleaned up. So with that spotted owl that was located, well, was documented in 2001 on Humboldt Redwood Company, with that spotted owl, even though it hasn't had activity since 2001, pose anybody moving forward to get this property cleaned up as a cannabis project?
Um, it, it poses a significant constraint. There's going to have to be some serious surveys to determine whether or not there is, are owls in proximity. Two point oh assumes that if there are owls in proximity, and I think it, I can't remember what the is a mile or a mile and a quarter, is presumed to be harassment, which is a take under Endangered Species Act language and, and thus a significant adverse impact.
Okay. Thank you. Like that answer, I just, I don't see a pathway forward to this property getting cleaned up if it's completely denied. And that's the that's, that's where I'm at. I don't think it should continue operating as it is either, though. So.
And if I could, Commissioner Mulder, we are absolutely sympathetic to what you're saying. We do everything we can to try to get applicants to turn that corner and, and begin to clean properties up and, and get them into a state where they can be approved and operated in accordance with local and state regulations. Sometimes the repetitive violations demonstrate a path that is not just, is just not heading in that direction.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes, thanks, Chair. I too believe that with the violations that happened back in 2016, it just compounded things for this applicant to make it very hard. I would be more like, I would be leaning towards trying to put it to a date uncertain and suspending the licensing until it's, it's fixed, at least to attempt to try and go forward instead of denying it outright at this point. I think stopping the the permit would put stop to anything else other than repairing what's been done and give them a pathway to make it legal, which is what we want to do. I believe that it's come to that point because of where we're at right now. That reality has really set in on this applicant. And I think if we were to deny it right now, it'd be very tough to go forward with anybody cleaning up what has been done and repairing the damage done.
Mike, I got a question. Uh, Thomas, you're after me. You came up. I got a two-part question. One, why hasn't code enforcement stepped in and did something about this property along with all the other agencies? And then two, could we as a planning commission ask that something be done? Because this is, this is a really bad situation. And the damage that's been done to watersheds and such are on my, I mean, I've never seen anything quite this bad, other than a couple of mountain tops that have been bulldozed off to make flat to put greenhouses on. But this one's pretty bad in my eyes and I've seen quite a bit. So that second part is, could we put any, add anything to this that's going to go after these people? They need to be arrested.
So procedurally, this is one of the things I probably should have talked a little bit about before is that we have intentionally maintained the separation between sites that are in the permitting process and code enforcement. We typically do not have code enforcement acting on sites that are in the active permit process. Kind of sends a mixed message. So one of the things that this does today is that if the commission were to deny this, this, this site would then become a target of code enforcement to get it cleaned up. I understand the desire to see it cleaned up within the permit system, the permit process. That is the preferred path in all cases. And Chair, your criticism of our handling of this is that we have, we do try to work with people to get them to clean up. And sometimes that just doesn't happen the way that you would like it to happen. And, and so this is one of those unfortunate circumstances where we have continued to try to work with people within the process. It hasn't worked. And, and so that is why we are bringing it forward for denial. And if it is denied, it then does become a target of code enforcement to resolve the violations that are on site.
Thank you. Thomas, you had a question.
So I'm just gonna, the reason I'm feeling, I don't know if you'd say empathetic, like I, all the violations are not great. I don't disagree with anyone that said they're really bad. I, I can see them from my backyard. But the story that I heard that was hearsay evidence, that was a large sum of money being taken. I know in the cannabis world, when you have I know in the cannabis world, when you have residents, you have a state license. You can't go through conventional financing. So it's not easy as any other business to get that capital to pay consultants, pay operating costs, pay fines and penalties. So that's, that's the problem where I'm stuck at. And I would, I would be more hoping that we could remove the, the permits, you know, the cultivation permits and, and give them a chance to go pathway forward because of the biological resources under 2.0, whereas the hopeful end result would be the property cleaned up and in compliance. And if not, they, I mean, obviously they, they've shown that, don't give them a chance to cultivate at the moment because of the, the documented violations. There's other hearsay, I mean, um, it's just that area right there. There's, there's extensive added new cultivation that's been allowed very close to that area though, too. So, um, both neighboring parcels. So I don't know.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. Any further discussion on this one? Not, I'm going to call for the vote. All right. See and done. Laura, roll call vote.
Mike Newman?
No.
Thomas Mulder?
No.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
No.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries. This project is denied four to three. In my opinion, they got off easy. It's troubling. This is really troubling. This should open up some eyes as to some questions that need to be looked at with all agencies. I mean, all the agencies that are supposed to be taking care of the public trust, I think dropped the ball on this one. I'm not just picking on the county director. This is all of them. It's terrible. All right. Thank you. So that one's denied. That brings us to item number seven. Ambiguity Farm LLC Conditional Use Permit, Garberville Area. Staff report, please.
All right. Um, let's see here. Hey, can you guys hear me and see my screen?
Sure.
All right. My name is Michael Holtermann and I'm the planner assigned to application number 12812. That's, uh, ambiguity farm. So just a brief project overview, uh, the cultivation area totals one acre.
Just a moment. I'm sorry. Um, can you, uh, Mr. Holtermann, can you make your screen full screen? Cause we're seeing the double. So it's smaller.
There we go. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Um, so just a brief project overview. Uh, the cultivation area for this project totals, uh, one acre and that's broken up into 28,760 square feet of full sun outdoor uh, and 14,800 square feet of light deprivation cannabis. Uh, the applicant is proposing an ancillary nursery, uh, that is, uh, 2,500 square feet total. So that's two, uh, nurseries of 1,250 square feet each. Uh, as far as processing activities, the applicant is proposing to harvest and dry onsite. And then all of the processing activities are proposed to occur offsite at a licensed third-party processing facility. Uh, the energy source is solar with a backup generator. Uh, the applicant's proposed water source is an eight, 800,000 gallon onstream pond uh, with a proposed rainwater catchment system. The annual water use for this project is projected to be 400,000 gallons annually. Uh, the applicant currently has 100,000 gallons of water storage and is proposing to, uh, purchase more water storage, more hard tanks to, uh, have 400,000 gallons of water storage total and transition to rainwater catchment as the, um, primary water source with the onstream pond serving as a supplemental water source, uh, if need be. Uh, here is the, uh, legal parcel, uh, that actually has two parcels there. Both of those APNs comprise one legal parcel. Uh, however, only the APN ending in 009 is, uh, houses cultivation. Here we have the site map, uh, everything that's kind of outlined in red. Uh, those are all things, uh, that won't be shown on the next slide in kind of a more close-up view. So this was just kind of show, uh, where the drying areas are, the water storage, the solar panels, uh, and the pond. And, uh, here's the site plan that also has been included with the staff report. Uh, that is the existing configuration on the left and the proposed configuration on the right. Uh, you can see there's a reduction of the outdoor cannabis, uh, as well as some changes to animal fencing in the streamside management area that is associated with restoration work that the applicant is proposing as part of this project. Uh, that restoration work includes, um, three restoration areas, pursuant to a restoration monitoring plan prepared by Home and Associates. Those include, uh, restoring the onstream pond, removing the greenhouse within the 50-foot SMA setback and, uh, removing a small hoop house that's approx- approximately 50 feet from a creek bank and, uh, relocation of a solar panel from the SMA. Uh, staff recommendation is that the commission find the project consistent with the final EIR for the CCLUO as described by section, uh, 15164 of the state sequel guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit and adopt the resolution approving ambiguity farms projects as recommended by staff subject to recommended conditions. I believe the applicant and agent are available for questions as am I, if you have any.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I forgot I muted myself. Mike, you had a question for staff?
Yes, I have a question. Uh, it was pointed out on a, an email submission for this, um, permit that the, um, approval will not conflict with the land conservation contract. This property directly conflicts with a resolution, um, basically, that it's in a functioning agricultural preserve where commercial grazing is a contract required land use. Is that not right or correct?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and answer that if I could through the chair. Commissioner Newman, um, this property was part of the larger Tubi Ranch, which is roughly 12,000 acres, um, that was in the Williamson Act. And it, you know, if you've been around Humboldt County for a while, you've probably heard of the Tubi Ranch case, where, uh, the ranch was actually broken up and ceased being used for, uh, the purposes of the Williamson Act. Um, the county actually did, uh, file lawsuit and there was a settlement which, uh, required the county to non-renew the contract. And that did happen in 2015. And so, um, the, I, I don't think it would be accurate to say that it's still a functioning agricultural preserve. Um, one of the things that did happen during the, adoption of both cannabis ordinances is that the county's Williamson Act Committee did make recommendations that were incorporated into the ordinances that, that actually found that cannabis could be compatible with, um, agricultural preserves if they were done in a, in a certain way. And so, um, I think you've got two things going on here. One is that this would not necessarily preclude the land from being managed for agriculture. For, you know, more typical agriculture, I should say. And then secondly, this, uh, land conservation contract has been non-renewed and I believe it's expected, uh, I, I believe it rolls out of the Williamson Act completely in 2024, if I'm correct.
Thank you. Peggy, you got your hand up?
So on page four, it talks about the tribal consultation and it says that you're still waiting for a final report. You have an interim, interim report. Do you typically approve or recommend for approval, um, permits that don't have final reports? Is that, I don't think, I mean, how hard would it get, be to get the final report if there's already interim report? And there's, doesn't appear to be an issue, but I'm just concerned that you don't have a final report.
Yeah, let me take one look at that. Give me one second. I do believe that they did submit a report. So, sorry, give me one second. Uh, so I do have the, the interim report. And then that was, I do believe I also have a, um, response from, um, the tribal entity that then said that, um, given that the archaeological survey results were negative, uh, standard inadvertent discovery language would be appropriate. As far as whether or not that final report would be necessary, given the response from the tribe, I think, uh, maybe Cliff or John might be better able to answer that.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Holtermann. Did the tribe respond that they are, uh, accepting the interim report with the inadvertent discovery protocol? Was that their response to that?
Uh, their response was that they had spoken to the archaeologist, archaeologist, excuse me, that completed the report and said that based on that, they had no concerns.
Okay.
That, that's the difference between an interim and a final is just you're waiting for the tribe to respond. So really you do have a final report, but it's just not in writing?
I would phrase it more precisely, we have a final response from the tribe that does not require a final report to be submitted.
All right. Any other questions? Staff reopen this up to the public. Done. I'm going to open this up for public comment. And the first caller is 6159. Star six to unmute yourself, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'm having some interference here. Uh, my name's Chris Crandall. I submitted a letter, uh, that I believe one of the commissioners mentioned. And I own the property that borders this parcel, uh, on the north side. And, um, along the entire north boundary. And it's all located within the Tubi Ranch Preserve in the Squaw Creek watershed. It's a 3,000 acre watershed, uh, Squaw Creek, down Squaw Creek, and it's, uh, dry land grazing resource land, land. And I commercially grazed cattle and that whole watershed is in production in commercial grazing of cattle. And it has been since, uh, for 20 years. So it's incorrect to say that it's not functioning. Now, the, uh, so I'll get into the Williamson Act, uh, oh, shoot, what happened?
You're still, you're still with us?
I, I'm losing power here. Hang on. Sorry about that. Um, okay. Now, there was some misinformation on the Williamson Act, um, conflict. And I, I was part of that lawsuit and I'll just say that the contract was non-renewed and it rolls out in 2026. So that's not 2024 isn't the correct date. And it's, um, and the Williamson Act guidelines say that you must use the majority of the land for the purpose of the, uh, preserve. And so that means that you, you can have a compatible use, but you must use the land for grazing. And it doesn't allow for the sole source, uh, the sole agricultural commodity to be cannabis. And I will quote the lawsuit, the, um, the court said, "We affirm the trial court's ruling that the secession of grazing violates the Tubi guideline." So they don't do any commercial grazing and they're in violation of the contract. And I've gotten several letters from Cliff Johnson and, uh, Director Ford that say that the contract is in full force until 2026. So I don't want to hear anything about it's in, um, non-renewal because that's not the issue. This, there's compliance issues here and I just, this, if we move along, this is the only cannabis grow.
Wrap it up.
watershed. Okay. This is the only cannabis grow, grow in the watershed. So I think, uh, and it's at the convergence of all the waters. You want me to wrap it up? Okay.
You're already past your three minutes, but you're the only.
All right. Well, I mean, all right. I'll, I'll, I'll wrap it up here. Um, well, I have some questions for the director then. Um, are there any other cannab- cannabis cultivation sites within this watershed? It's a 3,000 acre elevation watershed. Okay. So that's, this is an important resource land. Uh, the second question is, has the Humboldt Department of Environmental Health issued a onsite wastewater treatment, uh, system permit for this parcel? Because the workers on this cannabis cultivation are the residents of the parcel and they don't have a septic system on that land. And the last thing is the cultivation sites AEB, which are located in the gorge of the, of the watershed. There's no hydrologic logical assessment of the runoff. And I've calculated the, the load, they're, they're going to put 8,300 pounds of, of fertilizer into this acre cultivation. And that's a lot of, uh, chemicals and they need to have a, um, hydrological assessment of the, of the water going into the gorge. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Praj White, go ahead.
Hello, Commissioner Bonjio, our Chair Bonjio and the Commission. Um, I am here with Mike Lindy, one of the owners and applicants for this project. I just wanted to reiterate, I happen to actually be at the Williamson Act Committee meeting. The date that the committee chose to give guidance to the planning department regarding projects. And they indicated that any cannabis project of acres or less in size and would not interfere with the grazing activities. And in fact, uh, the owners of this property do run cattle on this property and proudly raise cattle. And then, um, I wanted to note that it's true, the owner does live and operate on the property. They are committed to a very low impact project. They grow from seeds. They have no lights onsite. They're committed to rainwater catchment. And they do focus on no fans, no lights and cultivate a very sustainable patient. Thank you very much. I'm available.
Thank you, Praj. Any other public that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, see and done. I'm going to bring it back to the commission, close the public comment. All right. There we go. Any questions that the commission has or go ahead, Noah and Peggy?
Well, I was just going to, uh, say that I, um, I like this project because it is pretty low impact, uh, for the reasons that Praj White just pointed out. But, um, I was confused about whether the, uh, accusation of non-compliance with Williamson Act was, was a, was a factor or not that I should be concerned about. And I, I've, I've followed the discussion about whether it's rolling out and therefore doesn't apply or whether it's still in effect for till 26, till 2026. But what Praj just said is that this property does in fact, um, also use it for grazing purposes. And so that seems to sort of undermine the charge that they're not in compliance with that aspect of the, of the Williamson Act. So as far as I can see, I don't have any problems with approving this project and I would be happy to make a motion to do so once other commissioners have weighed in.
Noah, Peggy, you're next, and then Thomas.
Um, do we have a legal opinion from the county? Because I don't know if Praj is an attorney or not, or no, is familiar with the Williams Act. But does the county have a legal position on whether it's a violation or not of the Williamson Act?
Yeah, I, I will respond to that. Commissioner O'Neill, the thing that, Commissioner O'Neill, the thing that Praj White did correctly identify was the discussion of the Williamson Act Committee finding that small areas of cannabis cultivation are consistent with grazing land with, I believe it's a Class B contract. And that is true. And Mr. Johnson was there that day. I was there that day. Mr. White was there that day. The fact of the matter is, is the contract still is in place. So as Commissioner Levy mentioned, that is something that needs to be weighed. The comment that has been made is the property is still being grazed. So it is still in compliance with the Williamson Act contract. And the Williamson Act Committee has said that cannabis cultivation is a compatible use to the Williamson Act contract. So there is no violation from the perspective of the contract itself because grazing is being conducted on the site and cannabis has been determined by our Williamson Act Committee to be a compatible use.
Thomas?
I just wanted to thank my fellow commissioners for all the questions because every concern I had, like notes on, they asked the questions and got the answers. And so I'm, I'm kind of worried. I think Noah said he was ready to move forward on the project, so.
Well, Noah? I think you're the one who's.
Sure, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we find that we have considered the addendum to the adopted MND for the CMMLO as described by section 15164 of the State Sequel Guidelines. Make all of the required findings for approval of the CUP and special permit and adopt the resolution approving the Ambiguity Farm LLC project as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you. And we have a second. Thomas, any further discussion? None, or a roll call vote, please.
Brian Mitchell.
Brian, you there?
That was a yes for me.
Okay.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Peggy O'New?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Brings us to item number eight. MDF Enterprises Incorporated Special Permit and Zoning Clearance Certificate in the Bridgeville area. Take a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So are you seeing the display correctly?
Yes. Well, nice family, I think.
Thanks. Let's see. Yeah, that was planned.
Again. Good.
Do you see?
You look, that that looks good.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, perfect. Sorry about that. Thank you. All right.
It was perfect for a moment. Now it's in the preview. Split screen.
Oh. Okay, for that. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Okay. So the project is MDF Enterprises Incorporated Special Permit and zoning clearance certificate. The project site is in the Bridgeville area, southeast Humboldt County. And it is just off of Highway 36 and along Larrabee Valley Road. The project site is presently host to an approved 30,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation and 3,000 square feet of propagation altogether in 13 greenhouse, greenhouses. The proposal before you is to receive 60,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation in 24 greenhouses from three retirement sites. To add 6,000 square feet of additional propagation into greenhouses and add a 2,400 square foot metal building for processing. So with that, there would be a total of 90,000 square feet. But as a reminder, this proposal is just for 60,000. 30,000 is approved. This is the site plan. Again, Larrabee Valley Road runs through the project parcel and the southwest portion fronts on on Highway 36. The water source for the project is by an existing one and a half million gallon rainwater catchment pond. And also 70,000 gallons of storage tanks for a total of 1,570,000 gallons of water presently and available for the proposal. An analysis by a registered forester states that based on annual rainfall in that watershed, the pond can potentially capture up to 2.5 million gallons annually. That is, if it's drawn down and with additional rain, even in a drought year, that it could capture up to 2.4 million gallons. There are two existing approved non-diversionary wells on site that are available for backup, but based on the analysis, that backup should not be required. The annual water use is estimated to be 1.4 million gallons. So there's more than sufficient water available through the catchment basin. Power source is currently provided by a generator and will continue to be used for the proposal by generator with transition to PG&E when the PG&E drop is extended, which PG&E has been applied for and PG&E says will happen. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this proposal and circulated and found that there were no significant impacts that could not be mitigated to less than significant level. There are nine mitigation measures for biological resources, potential impacts, and one for protection of potential cultural resources. And these are included among the list of conditions of approval. California Department of Fish and Wildlife visited the project site prior to release of the environmental document and made no comments on the environmental document. Comments were received from Caltrans regarding their need for an encroachment permit and from the State Department of Cannabis Control. Comments did not change the conclusions of the mitigated negative declaration. There are three conditions related to roads that staff is requesting changed to conditions number, proposed conditions number 17, 19, and 20 indicate that the applicant will need to work with County Public Works for an encroachment permit. But Highway 36 is the Caltrans facility. So conditions number 17 and 20 should be deleted. And condition number 19 should just be modified to remove reference to Humboldt County Public Works and replace with Caltrans. Staff recommends that the commission find the environmental assessment was conducted in compliance with SECA and reflects the independent judgment of the agency. Make the findings in support of the mitigated negative declaration. Adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Make all the findings required for approval of the zoning clearance certificate and the special permit. And approve MDF Enterprises Special Use Permit and Zoning Clearance Certificate and the mitigation monitoring reporting, reporting program, subject to the recommended conditions of approval. With deletion of conditions number 17, 18, and 20 and modifying, I'm sorry, not 18, 18 stays as it is. Deletion of condition 17 and 20 and modifying condition number 19 to reflect Caltrans responsibility. That concludes the staff report. And the applicant's agent, Jeff Slack, I believe is available, and also the registered forester, Chris Carroll, if there are questions related to the pond. Thank you.
Thank you. Peggy, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, my question is regarding the comment PG&E drop. When it's extended, they'll switch to PG&E power. And that PG&E has just assured you that they're going to do this. I'm a little bit of familiarity with getting PG&E to do a project. First, my question is, did the applicant apply for PG&E? They, when you apply, you're required to pay a design fee. They come back after they design it and they ask you to pay upfront, and then you wait for them to schedule, which could take a couple of years. So what does that mean? Do we, do you have something in your file that says PG&E, that this process is already in the process, that they they've paid fees, they've got an application? Because PG&E just doesn't extend power on their own anymore, I don't think. And have you seen confirmation of this PG&E is going to extend? Because if not, I think we're giving them a big pass on, you know, generator use with no requirement that they even do anything other than use a generator. So maybe somebody can answer me.
Yeah, Commissioner, thank you. So no, no written confirmation from PG&E, just part of the applicant's proposal that they have applied and that PG&E has said they will extend, but no, no timeline provided.
They don't just say they're going to extend. They ask you for a deposit, design the the extension, and then they ask you to pay upfront, and then you wait for them to get around to it. So you never pay upfront, or if you haven't done the design, you know, given money for design, you could be in this, oh, they're going to do it stage forever. And even after you pay all that, it can take a couple of years, depending on whether there's a forest fire somewhere and they have to replace those, you know, those lines first. I've been there where it's taken as long as three years after you've fully paid for the services. So I'm kind of leery of the just honor system. If they haven't paid to have it designed or they haven't paid to have it extended that, because they could just be in that state forever. And with other people, we're saying, oh, you got to do renewable, you can't use your generator. You know, we're putting all these stipulations on other people. But if you just put a statement in your application that says, I'll do my, you know, when it I'll switch over when I get out, and then it never is going to happen. So I don't know why everyone doesn't use that statement.
Well, if Jeff Slack, the agent is available, maybe you could.
Maybe cleared up, and maybe they were just waiting, because I kind of sympathize with how long it takes after you've 100% paid. They had $7 million of the tribe's money for like three years while we waited for them to do the project. So I understand that, but if you haven't even applied, or if you haven't paid upfront, and I don't know how long this extension is, I do know a little bit about what it costs, because you have to do, you know, if there's a lot of trees, there's extensive tree removal that has to happen first.
We'll let the applicant speak after, at the end of all the questions, when we go to the attendee or to the public. So Melanie, you had a question next.
Yes, thank you. I have a question for the director. This was a zoning clearance certificate project, and we, the commissioners, received a letter from the applicant regarding this a few weeks back. It seems like they're one of the ones that have been waiting for five or so, maybe six meetings. And it does seem to be a relatively sustainable project. It's a three retirement sites on Dagland. And so I'm just wondering if this project were to go forward today, would this go to zoning clearance now? Or would this still be coming to us?
Go ahead.
Through the chair, this is a situation where there are a series of stacked RRRs. And so the cultivation area grows to, I believe it's around 60,000 square feet. And, and so that's why this is a bit larger with all the stacked RRRs than what the ordinance really even contemplated. That's why we've done separate environmental review on it. We also modified the ordinance for situations like this where RRRs are stacked because when you put together a bunch of RRRs, you've basically done more than what discretionary permits would even allow under the ordinance. And the ordinance now requires that when you're stacking RRRs, that they have a special permit so that they become discretionary. All that being said, the special permit normally still goes to the zoning administrator. And this is one of those where a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned to you that the public had asked that projects this large not be considered by the zoning administrator, even though special permits are totally within the realm of the zoning administrator. In fact, they're totally within the realm of the director to sign off on. But they asked that the public hearing not be conducted by the zoning administrator, that they be conducted by the planning commission. So that is why this has been conveyed to the planning commission, the public has asked that the director and zoning administrator are not acting base.
For this specific project or just anything greater than 10,000 square feet?
An acre or more. And that's what I brought up with the commission, and the commission kind of pushed back on me a little bit. In fact, I remember Commissioner Levy's face in particular when I mentioned that that request had been made to have all larger cultivation sites be redirected to the planning commission. And the response was, whoa, 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 not everything needs to come to the commission.
Yes, I remember that. In fact, I recommended it would be a set size.
Yeah, so this is above that set size, and that's why it's here in front of the planning commission.
I see. Okay, thank you very much. I think that that clears that up.
Okay, Mike Newman, and then Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. I, towards the end of the the presentation, there was some takeaways on some of the general recommendations, general conditions. And I wasn't fast enough to get to the pages because they weren't referenced real quick. And, and so what were those three conditions that were recommending to be modified? And is it in our executive summary or report someplace at the front here about that? For changing the action?
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. It was late information from Public Works who identified that in the staff report, and so it didn't make.
Identified which ones?
Oh, sorry, yeah, conditions number 17, 19, and 20.
Those are general conditions.
Project-specific conditions.
Yeah, they are project-specific.
Part of attachment one, can the general conditions age 19, 20, and 21?
They are part of attachment one. They're on page 21.
Or, yeah, 20 and 21.
That's right. So 17 and 20 should be deleted. And 19 should be modified to state that it's Caltrans that issues encroachment permit, not County Public Works.
So it needs to be changed. So it needs to be changed where exactly there?
Okay, it's.
Halfway through there prior to.
Yeah, it's, that, that's right. Yeah, the first full sentence is correct. The second sentence starts an encroachment permit. And then the rest should be deleted. And in place of that, will be required from Caltrans.
Okay, so an encroachment permit shall be required from Caltrans and the rest of it deleted.
That's right.
Okay. I'm glad I asked specifically about these things, since it's not in the recommendations. Thanks.
Thomas, you're next.
Sorry, my someone's asking me questions. I got a little distracted here. So on page twenty-three, I see on number two condition, it limits it to six watts per square foot on the mixed light. And this already is an approved site with generator use. So I'm not seeing the concern. I didn't see any plan to add more generators or anything like that, but maybe I missed it. I'm not, I'm not seeing a concern for the generator until PG and E that was brought up by one of the commissioners. But I think it's ready to move forward.
Melanie, your hand, is it backup or is that from before?
Uh, no, it's from before. I'll take it down.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open this up for public? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. And the first is Jeff Slack.
Good evening, Chair Banjo and the commission through the chair to address Commissioner O'Neill's comments. So PG and E has already been out to the site, design reviews. A design review has been undertaken, fees have been paid. The issue is that the scope of the project at the time was thirty thousand square foot with the application going to ninety thousand square feet. So what PG and E told the applicant was, once it's approved, come back with additional design for the additional sixty thousand, sixty thousand square feet and we'll address the power needs at that time. We've submitted a, a power needs assessment to the department addressing what the, the power needs at the site are going to be. PG and E is standing by to accept that design once the project has been approved. And we're moving forward on that. As to Ms. McCaver's point, yes, the Commissioner McCaver, I apologize. The, um, the process has gone through the zoning administrator hearing, it's been continued here. These are zoning clearance certificates. These are relocation remediation projects that we are seeking approval for and should be considered ZCCs. And I'll be available to answer any further questions.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. Does anybody have any questions for Jeff while he's right there? Right? Thank you, Jeff. So next caller is Tanya Horlick.
Thank you all. And I have a question. I'm wondering how the commission quantifies the use of generators impact on the atmosphere? Especially if in the interim of acquiring a PG and E permit or a line of power that could potentially cause a wildfire or be a source of power outage for those plants in the ninety thousand eight, or sorry, square feet that are planned in this. I'm just curious, um, how does the commission quantify the use of generators in that interim? And their impact on all the area and the, and the people that would be living there as well?
All right. That was you, that, your final question?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just really curious how you quantify generator impact on the environment. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
You. I don't know exactly how to answer that. We go with what the staff recommendation and the consultants usually give us for the most part. Director.
I think that, um, well, I, I think that what we've been doing is that we've been pushing compliance forward by about four years. And I think that is what Commissioner O'Neill was getting at earlier. Is that we, she, she was asking if there was a date as to when the hookups would be available and if they had applied yet. And it sounds like that is the case. And so I think if I understand the question correctly, our answer is that we've been allowing compliance to take place within four years.
Thank you for providing some answer to my question.
Thank you. The next caller is seven, four, two, nine.
Hi, good evening. This is Roby Tenorio. And I would suggest that with this level of expansion with mixed light, it's another one and a half acres with more than one harvest plan, that cultivation on the new sixty thousand square feet be postponed or wait until the PG and E is in place so that there is not a need for generators. This is expansion. So it should wait just until things are in place. And just to a little bit of information, I'm not sure why staff didn't provide this earlier, but two point O ordinance, the ordinance two point O is, it says renewable energy, it will be exclusively renewable. There was discussion in the beginning of creating one point O that there would be an eighty, twenty split with eighty percent renewable. I'm not sure how that was changed, but that, that was part of the discussion. So thank you. I think it should just wait until things are in place. You don't need generators. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next caller, Jeff Slack, you have your hand back up. Is, did you want to comment again? Being the applicant, I'll allow it.
I would, and I, I apologize to the chair. I, uh, forgot to mention, so the project doesn't propose to increase generator use. Basically, the PG and E ag drop needs to be in place to meet the power needs of the additional sixty thousand square feet. So we're not talking about adding generators to supply the new project. We're talking about having the PG and E in place and the power in place so that when it, when it's approved and it can be built out, the power to supply that expanded footprint will be there.
Yeah, Director, the Director would like to ask a question.
So Mr. Slack, is what you're saying that you're either not going to start cultivating until PG and E is in place? Or you're only going to cultivate outdoor until PG and E is in place?
So the, the type of power needs, so the power, the power can be used to generate the drying fans and, and the non-cultivation activity to meet the full power needs of the project. It would require lights in the greenhouses and they were going to wait until they put the full PG and E in until they put the lights in the greenhouse. Does that, if that makes sense to the, to the director?
Can, can you answer just a question really simply for me? So is, are they going to cultivate outdoor until the PG and E drop is in place?
Light deprivation outdoor.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question, Director. Uh, any other public wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Thomas, I see you have your hand up.
No, is it, was I hearing it right that it would be, that it was recommended? Or maybe a good idea from staff to condition it to be approved as outdoor use until PG and E drop? Is that what I kind of heard with that question? Or is that just an amended operation plan or something like that?
Through the chair, the way I understood Mr. Slack's responses, that is their current plan. Sometimes for clarity, it's beneficial to add a condition to indicate that there will be no mixed light cultivate, no additional mixed light cultivation until PG and E has been extended and expanded at the site.
Okay.
Could I say? Go ahead. Can I suggest that we have the, um, the condition be that the number of kilowatt hours currently used in the existing project so, shall not be exceeded until such time as PG and E or a renewable energy resource is available. So cap the energy use as opposed to just limiting indoor, just cap the number of kilowatt or megawatt hours.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Director, what do you think? You kind of nodded your head.
Yeah, I, I, I think that that's something that's workable. I, I would suggest that we, prior to any additional expansion, that the applicant demonstrate what the current power usage is. And, and that the site is limited to that amount of power usage until such a time as PG and E has been expanded and extended to the site.
Thank you. Thomas, your hand back up or just still up?
It's back up, just the reality of drying product and the energy use for temporary times. I think there would, you know, you're talking about adding another sixty thousand square feet. So PG and E is slow, so it'd be, I don't know. It there, it'd be nice to see some flexibility in that energy use, but you know, keep it to the county code of outdoor.
Well, getting to the bewitching hour, does anybody want to make a motion on this one? Seems like we're kind of.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this item subject to the changes discussed in who grants the encroachment permits as well as place a cap on the total number of, of energy used on the project until such time as PG and E is hooked up or other alternative energy sources are acquired.
I'll second that.
The motion is second, any discussion on that?
Can we just add into that motion that it's dropping recommend, uh, conditions seventeen and twenty and amending nineteen to make it the approval of Caltrans instead of the ambiguous bit that we had before? Is that okay with you, Brian?
That, that was, that was the first change that I, that I intended to articulate. So, uh, if, if your wording feels more tight, then I'm amenable to it.
Okay, cool. Thank you, Peggy. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, Laura, roll call vote, please.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Alan Banjo?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, motion carries seven, zero. All right, so we are not going to have time to get through anything else tonight. So we're going to have to continue some items. So we are going to need to continue items nine through eleven. Eleven. And then.
H one and H two.
H one and H two till the meeting of, uh, February third.
H three also. H one through three.
H one, two, and three, to, uh, February third. So can I get a motion to that?
You continue them, do they go to the front?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
All right, so who said yes or made a motion?
Brian.
Brian, okay, sorry about that.
Second.
I think Melanie did.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Brian's the first, Melanie's second. All, uh, roll call vote, please, on that. Laura?
Alan Banjo?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Ryan Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Uh, is there any other, trying to get to the last?
Have you had something to talk about at the end?
That's what I was just trying to get to.
And, and I'd be happy to have an answer to that at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Director. I, it's just something that struck me as surprising and would love to hear staff's, uh, position on overruling the, the whole commission.
Okay. Well. Now, hold on, hold on, Thomas. Go ahead, Director.
So, you know, in an appeal, the appeals are considered what's called de novo as, as if they're brand new. And so the action by the company is there. But if there are things that need to be, be considered relative to how the action was conducted, those are things that staff is obligated to point out. What the commission did in that particular case is that there was a well. There was a high functioning well that was not hydrologically connected. And the commission simply added a requirement that a lot of water storage be added that didn't necessarily identify what the issue was that needed to be addressed. But apply the condition. And so what staff did in the analysis is identified that. But then also identified the fact that the county as a whole right now is struggling with these wells. And where we are working on going is looking at, can we approve? And this came out of the workshop that the planning commission had with the hydrogeologist and, and Dave Fish, the, the well builder. That is it possible to look at wells and look to keep them in a state of equilibrium? Monitor for equilibrium? And, and then if they're not in equilibrium, then require an alternative source of water or some other source or some other source of water or water storage or something to protect the resource. And so that was the, is the recommendation that's being made to the board of supervisors that there be a condition added, not just to add water storage, because there's not really a good nexus there, but rather to look at what the resource is and develop an appropriate response to protecting the resource. And so it's not just, I wouldn't call it overruling. It's a far more refined, uh, recommendation than, than, uh, what was just being appealed.
So I guess then, would it be appropriate for us to ask you that if we're adding conditions? Because we feel that there are reasons and we haven't adequately articulated the finding needed to justify that condition that you alert us to that, to the, to the extent that that arises to your, the fore of your mind. So we don't end up in this position. Because I think upon further discussion, we could have, you know, seeing it was a unanimous vote, come up with findings and rationale for that additional, um, condition.
No, and I think Commissioner Mitchell, that is the core of, of what the discussion should be, is first articulate what the concern is, what the likely resource impact is. And then talk about ways to address that. And, and sometimes it feels comfortable to apply conditions that have been applied before that don't really necessarily get what the core issue is or could be. Or that hasn't really been defined. It's just that we've done that before, so let's do it again. And, and that's, you know, that, that gets into dangerous territory because there's not a good nexus there for what the requirement is.
Yeah. Commissioner Mitchell, I was wondering if what you were perhaps inquiring about is whether the uh, planning staff could include our arguments perhaps in those cases where uh, there is a project that was denied by us and then appealed. Am I understanding that correctly that that might be something you were hoping to see?
Well, what I was asking was if, if we add an additional condition that staff does not see adequate findings or justification for that we be alerted to make sure that we thoroughly document our discussions and findings so that it doesn't just appear that we are arbitrarily and capriciously adding conditions where none are warranted.
Uh huh. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. I'd like to see both actually. And, you know, um, I think it would be great to have the arguments that we did present, especially if it was a unanimous vote uh, sent along in the staff report to the board of supervisors.
So one of the things through the chair, this could maybe get into a very long discussion, but one of the things that we have been trying to do is really help the commission make good findings. Because one of the things that is very important for the commission to understand is that the individual comments that you make are not necessarily findings and evidence. Those are comments that individual commissioners. But until you agree and put it into findings and evidence, that that's what you intend to say as a commission. Those are really not your thoughts and your record, your, the record that you're creating as a whole. So it's really, really important that you, you know, you know the difference and, and really struggle with that. Because you all have to come to a consensus. Not everybody has to agree, but it's a majority vote. That, that is what we intend to say.
Thank you. Yeah. So in this case, given that it was unanimous, then we should have raised our arguments perhaps in a a, a better way in terms of findings. And then you would have passed them on to the board of supervisors in the staff report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas, you have your hand up.
Oh. Two things. First off, just a point of clarity. I don't know if you asked for a public comment on the continuation of all those projects. In that last action, we didn't, we did. And, uh, straight up honesty. Straight up honesty. The only reason that was unanimous is because some commissioners that didn't agree with the condition might have been fearful that the project might have gotten denied. And that's why they may have voted with the, what they felt is unjust, unfounded conditions. I know I'm speaking for myself in that aspect.
Any other comments? Anything, Director, you want to add?
At this time, we will come back with a consent calendar and see how we, well, we can make those work again. We will try to be judicious about that. Hopefully that will allow the commission to move through some of these things that are even on tonight. That are at the end of the agenda that really aren't deserving of having to sit through a full meeting.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. There's anything, nothing else? I think we are adjourned and we will get out of here. All right.
See y'all.
See you next time, guys.
Yep.